The 3:30 p.m. meeting of the Bakersfield City Council is now in session.
3:30 regular city council meeting of June 26, 2024. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Arias.
Here.
Councilmember Weir. Councilmember Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Gray. And Councilmember Cor.
Here.
Thank you. In keeping with the council's new resolution, public statements are now received at different times depending on the item. I will call on the city clerk to call for public statements at the appropriate time, so please listen carefully for the correct time to speak. If you wish to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and place it in the tray on the counter next to the speaker podium. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on today's agenda or a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify a specific agenda item will be presumed speakers for the non-agenda public statements. If you're here to speak on an item not listed on the meeting agenda, you will be called first to speak. Statements are given a two-minute time limit per speaker, 20 minutes total for all non-agenda items, public statements. If you're here to speak on an item listed on the agenda, I will call for you at the appropriate time, so please listen carefully. If public statements become disruptive and I have to clear the chambers to regain order of the meeting, you will be called in one at a time to provide your public statement when your item is called. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by resolution of the city council. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, prevents the city council from conducting the business of the city. Consider this a first warning to everyone in attendance that conduct that disrupts this meeting may result in expulsion and/or the chambers being cleared. Behavior that disrupts the meeting includes repetitive statements, shouting, interrupting staff or presenters during the meeting, speaking out of turn, outbursts from the audience, or surpassing the two-minute time limit. Madam Clerk, for the record, Councilmember Gray entered at 3:37. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items not listed on the agenda?
Mayor Go, we've received two public speaker cards for items not listed on tonight's agenda. The first public speaker is Ernie Lopez.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Ernie Lopez. I wanted to bring up people who buy real estate because I could have ended up hurt because someone aimed a weapon. I got the police report and everything, but I don't see it safe for people who do real estate to, for them to not be ordinance where some people can get shot. I was watching a property and I was shot because the owner had somebody else watching it and the dude aimed unmarked weapon. It didn't have a serial number on it. And they were drinking and doing drugs and I was instructed to watch that property. And I don't feel that justice was served on that situation. I had the police report. Everything was made accordingly, but I feel that something up, that it should be more safer.
Anything else, sir?
No, that's it.
Thank you. I'm so sorry that you were shot. And Mr. Clegg, is there somebody who could be assigned maybe just to follow up with him?
We can take care of that, Mayor.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Michael Turnipseed.
Welcome.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I'm Michael Turnipseed. I represent the Kern County Tax Payers Association. I have some handouts for you here because I know I can't get it all in in two minutes. I attended Monday's Budget and Finance Committee meeting with the topic, "The Economic Strategic Plan." The plan supposedly aligns council goals and reflects the most promising opportunities and most pressing to address the most facing challenges facing the Bakersfield economy. Council's goals, I've been watching the process for many years. You adopt goals, they're there. Never really do we go through that whole process very early. Do we ever see actually benchmarks and outcomes and make sure these outcomes ever occur? Because the outcomes happen four or five years down the line. The council needs to adopt Sustainable Economic Development Assessments, SEDAs. An SEDA defines community well-being based on 10 factors grouped into three categories. The economics, which is income, economic stability, and employment. Investment, investment and, excuse me, I saw it with the clock. Investments include education, healthcare, and infrastructure, which reflect the outcomes of the local government goals and programs. Needs to be sustainable, the environment equality of a strong civil society, and sound government. Using indicators from publicly available sources, SEDAs assess government performance on each dimension. SEDAs were developed by the Boston Consulting Group. The city needs to get this right and they need to look, adopt different ways of evaluating where they want to go down the road because failure really is not an option. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Turnipseed. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Turnipseed, thank you so much for your comments. Thank you for being at the Budget and Finance meeting on Monday.
I was the only one.
You were, and I appreciate it. And so I think what, from what I'm hearing from you is, we really need to look at key indicators related to outcomes. Is that, when you boil it down, what you're asking for the city?
Well, I think there's a bigger picture than just economic developments and jobs. And that's why I put the handouts together. If you look at what SEDA does and go back about six or seven pages, you will see a graph, actually a circle pie chart, that kind of explains what SEDA is and the different parts of it, and how we need to take a holistic approach because it's everything that we do. And I know we spend a lot of money now on different things, but economic development is going to be the engine that's going to pay for everything and get the benefits that we need to get better healthcare and better health in the community. We need to do things, education, infrastructure. You know, our infrastructure has obvious challenges, and it's all going to come from the monies from economic development. And you measure economics from income, economic stability, and employment, but there's more. There's the equality portion. There's the civil society, which is really the public safety aspect of it. It's the environment within the city. There are many components that I don't see in your economic plan. And the Boston Medical Group developed this 10 years ago and to address and rate every country in the world. But if you look at our economy, our economy isn't just one economy. It's based up of the 1,800 counties that are put together for our national economy. So we're part of that. So we need to look at, from a local level, a little bit different approach than what we're doing because I think both the city and the county have big challenges moving ahead and competing with everybody else. I think we're behind the wheel and we have to catch up. And it's going to take some bright ideas and different approaches to get there.
No, I appreciate that. I read a while back, it's no longer a competition among nations. It really is a competition among regions globally. And so as we look at economic development, we ought to think about that competition. And one of the things I really appreciate about this is that these 10 dimensions really are holistic in nature. So you got, just for the benefit of the public, the economic dimensions, which are governance, environment, income, economic stability, employment. We have the investments dimension, health, education, infrastructure, sustainability, equality, civil society. I suppose governance and environment are under that sustainability, but it really gives us a 360 view on our region as a more holistic way to measure our growth in terms of economic development.
The quality of life is what it really says. It doesn't matter how big your economy is if you don't have the quality of life.
Okay.
And that includes how long you live and everything else. And in Pittsburgh's Smart City campaign they ran a few years ago, they said, "If it's not good for everyone, it's not good for anyone." And I think when we look at some of the decisions we make, we need to think that way.
I appreciate it. I think two things were really striking from this. For me, number one is, we have a lot of activities that are outlined in the economic development strategy. Not all of those activities are a responsibility of the city, but certainly we have a lot of things going on. We want to make sure that we are being impactful and that we're able to measure those things. That's something that Councilmember Arias and I spoke about at the committee meeting on Monday. So identifying those key measurements, I think, is really critical. So I'm going to ask Mr. Clegg if we can get with Mr. Turnipseed and discuss these ideas and see how this might work within our framework to measure the impact of all of our activities related to economic development. And then secondarily, I think the other piece is that economic development and really quality of life doesn't just sit within our economic and community development department. It really is cross departments, every single department within the city. And all of our partners in the county and education are also required to participate to improve the quality of life for our region. And so I think we all have various different roles to play. So that's what's striking when we take a look at this framework. So, thank you.
Mary Barlow made a comment, and I wish I'd wrote it down so I could read it properly, about when we have such large-scale problems, one entity, one agency cannot solve those alone. It's bringing, and that was part of her, when she started the Kern Pledge, you've got to bring everybody to the table, the education community, the healthcare community. If we're going to make the quality of life better, it takes, like what Hillary say, it takes a community to raise a child. Well, it takes everybody to raise a community.
Thank you, Mr. Turnipseed.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Reports item 3A, Presentation on Neighborhood Stabilization and Prevention Programs.
Thank you. And for those of you who are wanting to make public comment, you'll make, I'll give you an opportunity after the staff's presentation. Mr. Clegg.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm going to kick us off and then I'll turn over some more of the details to Ms. Byers. And then we've actually, we're coordinating this presentation to include information on several different topics that we've also invited folks from the Greater Bakersfield Legal Assistance to present a little bit on one of the programs that's going to be highlighted in this broader framework. So what we're going to do today is, this is in response to a couple of different things. One, just, you know, general interest in this topic, and particularly the topic of our eviction prevention program, as well as the recent referral from Councilmember Arias to really look at funding sources towards, you know, programs like the eviction protection program, as well as other prevention, housing prevention programs. So the slide that you see before you, we've really labeled this in a broader perspective, more about neighborhood stabilization and prevention programs, because there are a number of different programs that can actually have important impacts on community. And we wanted to kind of zoom out first and look at the bigger picture and then orient us to zooming back into where we're going to focus some more of our conversation. And so I just wanted to reflect for a moment that around any type of a housing response system, especially when you're looking around homelessness, this is just one example. I'm going to show you several different examples, that you can look at a broader framework. And so in any good system, you need to be looking at your emergency sheltering, your transitional housing, your permanent housing, but you also need homeless services on one end and you need preventative services on the other end to try and keep individuals from entering into the need for those services and addressing vulnerability factors and risk factors. This is just another example from another community. This is not the precise rubric here in Kern County, but just another example of where you need to have an iterative process where you're addressing outreach, coordinated entry, prevention, emergency sheltering, rapid rehousing, and ultimately permanent supportive housing. I would argue that in addition to that, we should be thinking about market-rate housing. And so if you look at a full housing continuum, this is just another example used in a different city. They had a fantastic graphic, so I stole it, which demonstrates that, you know, on the full spectrum from homelessness all the way to market rate and in potentially even homeownership, that there's multiple different steps or segments of this housing continuum or housing spectrum. And that often we don't necessarily move folks immediately from one to the other. Often it's, we try to step individuals through some of our emergency needs into transitional housing and ultimately permanent supportive housing. But sometimes it's also about taking folks from supportive housing into market-rate housing, or market-rate rental into market-rate ownership. I would also just reflect really quickly that there's even a bigger picture specific to housing, that there's also a full spectrum of even market-rate housing. And you can go from your detached, single-family homes to many types of more multifamily, but lower density to higher density, all the way up to mid-rise or even high-rise, higher-density housing. And lastly, this is just also a quick perspective, and this actually is from right here in Kern County. This is an example of how we address individuals coming through our coordinated entry system, that there are multiple steps and considerations that we need to have programs, you know, in a safety net, helping individuals across multiple different need areas. And so all of that is to say, there's a big picture, but we're not trying to talk about all of this today. We're not trying to focus on addressing all challenges around homelessness. We're going to be narrowing in on these stabilization programs, but we're reflecting to the council that we know that we need to address issues across a full spectrum. We're going to really zoom into the prevention-type programs and stabilization-type programs. Around housing and homelessness, we took a quick look just in this last week. The Kern County Homeless Strategic Action Plan has eight different, has three different goals, and there are 27 different objectives. But amongst those, one goal is focused specifically on reducing inflow, and there are eight of those strategies or objectives that are specific to prevention programs. There's also the city's affordable housing strategy that has four overarching strategies with 21 actions. There's not one of those strategies that is uniquely specific to prevention, but there are probably three or four of those specific actions that touch around prevention. However, I would recognize that while most of our affordable housing strategy is about unit production and producing more and more units, we probably can do more about some of our prevention strategies, but those are, again, recognized a lot more in our Homeless Strategic Action Plan. And then lastly, if we look at our draft housing element and many of the components that are required in the sixth cycle of the housing element, we have five overarching goals. There are 28 total strategies in their draft housing element, and one of those five goals is entirely focused on prevention and preserving housing and different prevention strategies. And there are multiple of the 28 strategies across more than one goal that do address suggestions or policy ideas that are related to prevention. I think I would note really quickly, since I mentioned the housing element work, that's largely policy-related work. It's not program-related work, but as we adopt some of those policies, it'll be incumbent on the city council and city staff to consider whether there should be complementary programs in support of those policy statements. So there are several existing plans and strategies that reference prevention and stabilization programs. So we wanted to make sure we're really taking all of those into account. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Ms. Byers to share with council some of the programs that are already in existence and some of the programs that are being proposed, and then lay out really a framework that we're recommending to the council, that staff go and do some analysis on overarching stabilization and prevention programs based on this, you know, these set of plans, and come back to council with some additional recommendations about how we can pursue more than just one program around prevention and stabilization, but make sure that it's within that context where we've looked at the bigger picture.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg. Madam Clerk, for the record, Councilmember Freeman entered at 3:42. Ms. Byers?
Mayor, Council. So one of the things we want to talk about is what is contributing to this pressure that we're having for an increase in homeless, not enough housing? And anyone you talk to will tell you it's a supply issue here in our community. So our population over the past decade has increased almost 50,000 residents. In the last RENA cycle, which was through 2023, 16,561 units were constructed. And so you already have this increase in population. We have been constructing more and more units recently. We have been constructing more and more units recently, but you can see where that's one of the factors. But our vacancy rate is somewhere between 2% to 3%, and it goes up and down around there. But a healthy housing market is really 5% to 7%, 5% to 6%. So when you have such a narrow entry or a narrow opportunity to be locating into a residence with the increased population, lack of housing being constructed, we have a supply issue in our community. The housing element has shown it. Conversations even yesterday at the Housing and Homeless, when we look at the BKRC, Homeless Strategies, talks about the supply issue. Mr. Clegg was showing you the different examples of types of housing. And so we have 125,143 housing units here in Bakersfield. This home ownership and this rate, so I started in November of '21. At the time, it was 59.7% home ownership across the city. It's currently 58.48, which leaves renters, 41% of our community is renters. Then we start to also look at the age of our existing housing stock. About 50% of our housing is over 40 years old. And really, studies have shown, and even our housing element talks about, that housing that's over 30 years old is most likely to need rehabilitation, whether that's new plumbing, roof repairs, foundation work. And so some of these older houses may have additional health risks, such as lead-based paint, such as asbestos. Though really, the housing stock that we're talking about, that is most likely to need rehabilitation, is that greater than 30 years old, and 50% of our housing stock is at that. The housing element also looked at the number of units in our, in our, or in our community that has code enforcement. And about 4% of our housing has active code enforcement activities occurring. And so this is one of the supply issues that we have in our community, that we have aging housing, we have lack of housing, we have a very tight vacancy rate, and we have more people moving to our community. And so that contributes to it. Another contributing factor is the rise in value. You look at the median rental rate, it's increased 62% since 2015. We utilize HUD's data, the CHAS data, and it's 2015 to 2019. And so if you look at increase of 62% since 2015, the rate back in 2019 was that almost half of the residents who rent in the city are considered cost burden. Community-wide, 36% is considered cost burden. And so we look at this demographics by race, by income, by home ownership. Even homeowners are cost burden, and it looks like about 27% of homeowners are additionally cost burden. And if they're in one of those units that's greater than 30 years old, cost burden, not doing deferred maintenance, then when they move out, you really have a struggle with the units in our neighborhoods. So the California Tenant Protection Act was 2019, and that was the state's attempt to do rent control. So you cannot, over a 12-month period, increase the rent greater than 10% or 5% of the consumer index for the region, which our region, it has been about 10% the last couple of years. They also identified what is considered just cause eviction, no fault, and fault. So a fault just cause is somebody who's not paying their rent, and then a no fault is the landlord has requested the individual to move out. But we look again, back at what that median rate has increased. It's increased 62%. You can only raise rent 10%. You start to see kind of a struggle with landlords who want to receive more money and who are then evicting tenants. And so we listed this as one of the contributing factors as well. So what do we have going on? We have a lot of existing programs, and then programs we're working through. Fair Housing, the city currently contracts with GBLA, and I want to be very specific about what that contract is. GBLA is a qualified fair housing organization, which HUD requires us to have because we're an entitlement city. So we are required to have qualified fair housing, but fair housing at the federal level is really defined more towards discrimination. The state has language for what fair housing is, but when we look at fair housing, we are looking at it solely from the lens of the federal government and discrimination-based. And so that is the activities that they provide for us now. Tonight, there is going to be an item later for city council for an eviction prevention program, and staff is recommending GBLA, and we'll have them speak to us in just a minute. We also have a homebuyer assistance. We utilize home funds. The city contracts with VCCDC. They are also a HUD-certified homeownership specialist, and that's why we contracted with them. They provide homebuyer education and down payment assistance. So when we start to look at homeownership, these greater than 30 years old, all of these things, these, this is what VCCDC does for new homeowners who are interested in going through the program and receiving down payment assistance. We have tenant-based rental assistance. Currently, we have several resources going to that. We have $1 million that was allocated at the mid-year budget from the interest we received from our ARPA funding. Tonight, there's an item for a substantial amendment to our home funds to, for $1 million to go to CAP-K for tenant-based rental assistance. PAP has five cycles, and in those five cycles, 1.4, 1,495,000 is allocated to tenant-based rental assistance, 10% of that is set aside for youth. Another program we have is Home Access. That's a CDBG program that assists homeowners who have ADA challenges. And so we can do ramps, we can do showers for those that are disabled. We've had that program for several years. It's about 50,000 annually. We also have a home wet repair and weatherization program. From ARPA, we allocated $1 million to that program. It provides up to 15,000 for things like new roof repair, new windows, efficient appliances, those type of things. And then as part of our TCC application, it did include a solar program, so that homeowners could get better prices on PG&E. And then the pilot eviction protection program. We did, we have done two RFPs now for eviction protection services. The first time we went around, it just, the request didn't line up as far as what the funding we had. And so we went back out, and we specified that legal aid would be 275,000, and that we were going to put 75,000 of the funding towards education programs. And so we reallocated it in the second RFP. We had a total of three submitters. GBLA submitted for both programs, and then we had one each, one for education, and we had one for legal aid. So this is what we asked to be in our pilot program, to also include reporting. And so this, this program will be brought back to the Housing and Homeless Committee. We're thinking after three months, in order to let council know how that's going. We have a representative here from GBLA, so I'm going to, at this time, introduce Valentin Narvise. He's going to go over what their proposal was, and then I'll get back up and speak.
Hello, everyone.
Welcome.
Good afternoon. Well, thank you for considering GBLA for this program. As you know, GBLA has been a legal aid organization in the community for quite some time, since at least 1968. Our bread and butter is housing services. We know how to protect tenants, and that's what we strive for. We strive to promote social justice and change through high-quality legal services. So we're well-equipped to protect the public, especially our most vulnerable populations. And our goal here would be to try to prevent eviction. As the program indicates, we would service people at different stages of the eviction process, meaning we would try to provide education to those who, you know, could be subject to eviction, give them education through workshops. If someone is about to become, you know, subject to eviction, we'd want to give them resources, access to those resources. And then if someone is about to be evicted through the actual legal process, we would want to provide representation to that person. And so I think this will provide, will fill in one of the much-needed gaps that the, you know, that the city has recognized exists, and so legal aid is ready and willing to help our community. I won't, I won't go through the slides, I won't read those to you, because, I mean, you can read those independently, but I think a better use of our time might be, you know, answering, asking and answering questions. If y'all have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer any.
We're not able to, at this point?
As we agendize this as a report, along with staff presentations, we can do question and answer. And I would acknowledge with the council that we are not taking action on the pilot program at this time. That will be on the consent agenda on tonight's 5:15 agenda. And so it's okay to have some question and answer, and we're not taking voting action on, on the pilot program this afternoon.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Just from the presentation, it looks like you're already providing these services. Is this something new, or is this something you're already doing, and it would just add to it?
So this, this service is something that we're well-equipped to do, because we have been doing it. And so this would allow us to actually expand the scope of our services. Right now, GBLA is in a growth mode, and what I mean by that is we're looking to add staff, because, you know, as we heard earlier, our population is growing. So it logically follows that the demand for these types of services is also going to grow. So this will actually allow GBLA to grow and meet that demand.
But you are already providing these services?
Yes, sir.
To some extent. Thank you.
Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. And I apologize to the public, I have a little bit of a cold, so bear with me. Thank you so much for coming tonight and for responding to the RFP. We're really excited to get this program lifted off the ground. Just a couple of quick questions for you. You know, throughout my time working in, you know, various elected offices, I've referred to, you know, dozens of cases to GBLA, and really grateful for the work that you've done to represent those clients. Quick question for you, I know capacity is such a, you know, challenge across the board for many of our nonprofits. You know, can you give us a sense of what, you know, wait times might look like with your current staffing for any, any particular case?
Sure. Well, we try not to have extensive wait times, we try to help people as quickly as possible. And the reason that's important is because in an eviction, people typically have five court days from the day that, from the day after they're served to respond, which means that an attorney or, you know, the person, the defendant, has to review those documents, understand them, and then somehow figure out the court process on how to do everything timely and accurately. Because if, if a response is not properly submitted or not timely submitted, that defendant is subject to a default, which means that they essentially lose the case automatically. And it's very difficult to set aside a default. As far as wait times for our services go, we strive to help someone as soon as possible because of that tight deadline. So understanding that five-court day deadline is critical to the workflow. And so over, over the, over the years, we've, we've improved and, in my opinion, perfected the workflow to help someone as quickly as possible. For example, our call reports, we have, we have VOIP phones, which allow us to report on our calls and our wait times. And, you know, I receive, I personally receive call reports on a daily basis, and I review those reports. And it's always a problem for me if someone has to wait on the phone for more than five minutes. So time is of the essence in these matters, so the, there is no room for delay.
Can you, can you talk to us a little bit about your proposal? You know, $350,000 isn't a ton of money. What does that mean in terms of capacity building? How many folks are you looking to hire on, if any? And then can you talk to us a little bit about timeline? How, how long can you stretch these dollars for us?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. So the money would allow us to hire at least one attorney, one paralegal, and a housing navigator. So we're envisioning three staff, you know, when you take into account overhead and things of that nature, I think the money would, would help cover those salaries. And so we're ready to get started right away. In fact, I have an interview scheduled for tomorrow morning with an attorney that I have in mind for this, this program. So it's, it's amazing how things are aligning for GBLA, and we're looking to get started as soon as possible.
Great, thank you so much. And then the second part of my question?
Yeah.
In terms of timeline?
Well, I mean, the, my understanding is that this contract would be for a period of about five years, renewed every year. So I, I don't know if I understand your, the second part of your question.
To ramp up the contract or to get it rolling?
Yeah, $350,000 isn't a whole lot of money. How, how long do you think that you'd be able to provide these services through this contract with that allotted amount?
Oh, I mean, I mean, we would, we would fulfill the, the contract term. I don't, I don't foresee any problems with that.
If I could help out, Councilmember, Mayor and Council, the $350,000, as written into the contract, was intended to be for a one-year period.
For a one-year.
And the, the, as written, there's the option if, you know, this comes back, you know, and again, this is a topic where we've called this a pilot project, we expect there to be some, you know, council and community interest that will bring back data analysis to the council on the number of clients served. One of the important purposes of this contract is to also gather data to understand what's the full scope of the challenge and issue out there, and be able to report back to council, are we, are we, you know, seeing really long wait lists? Are we seeing a number of clients that we're unable to serve with that amount of support and funding? And that the way it's written on the agenda for tonight is that there could be future renewals based on council future approval, but the funding that has been approved is for one year.
Great. Thank you for that, that clarification. Two, two last quick questions. You know, is there, is there anybody in the general population that, who might be going through, you know, an eviction, that GBLA cannot provide services to? Can you speak to that?
Sure. So there's, there's actually a few different categories. So the first would be, and it's important to understand, there's restrictions that we, we have as a, as a law firm. For example, if there is a conflict of interest, the rules of professional responsibility require us not to assist under certain circumstances if there's a conflict of interest that cannot be waived. So that would be the first category, where a conflict of interest exists. Another category would be where a person who has income or assets above a certain amount, you know, requests our services. We have restrictions as to income and assets. And then another category would be, you know, persons who may not have status in the United States, an undocumented person. And those restrictions come from the federal government. Because Greater Bakersfield Legal Assistance receives federal dollars, we're subject to federal law that says, you know, unless there's an exception, we cannot help a person without status in the United States. There are several exceptions to that. I could talk about that for a long period of time, but there are exceptions to it. And we do actually help persons who are undocumented with, you know, domestic violence restraining orders and special immigrant juvenile status, that sort of thing. And so, so to answer your question, yes, there are, there are people that we, we cannot assist because of federal law and state ethics rules.
Great, thank you so much. Last question, in terms, in terms of caseload, it sounds like you're going to bring on three additional staff members. You know, can you, can you just give us a ballpark range of, you know, how many cases we can expect to be able to help assist with? Is it going to be, you know, five a month, or is it going to be closer to like 50?
Yeah, I mean, that's a, that's a great question. So the, the program not only focuses on cases, but it also focuses on workshops. And so we're, we're hoping to have at least, you know, a workshop every week, where we help no more than 240 persons, you know, a year. As far as cases, I mean, if I had to guess, you know, based on the number of cases that we receive and the number of cases that are assigned, I would probably aim for anywhere between two to three cases a week, just for this program. But, you know, it's, it's a function of how many people request our services, you know, and that sort of thing.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for the presentation. It's good to see you again.
Thank you.
Glad that we're finally getting this up and running.
I know.
It's been a while since we first met in January of 2023, I think it was. Let me, let me ask you a few questions, just kind of winging off of Councilmember Arias. You mentioned your call reports, and that you monitor the number of calls and requests. I'm sure you have some tracking data of how many folks have called who were facing eviction that you, for that you, for funding reasons, you weren't able to serve. Can you kind of give us a ballpark figure of how many of those requests, if you have that data?
I don't have that, you know, data for, I can't share that data today, but I could look that up and provide that.
Okay.
If you'd like.
Okay. You know, we're, we're interested in this program. One attorney, one paralegal, one, was it homeless navigator?
Housing navigator, yeah.
Housing navigator, right. I, I had a similar question in terms of the capacity and just wanted to ensure that we can meet that capacity. So I, I'm looking forward to revisiting this issue in housing and homelessness in three months and then also at mid-year as we tuck, take a look at some of these contingency items that we're placing on, on the budget for, for mid-year review. In the education work, how do you plan to, to strategize where those educational workshops take place? What, can you kind of give us a, a better understanding of where that might work? And how are you working in collaboration with some of our other homeless service providers who are also working on homeless prevention?
Sure. Well, the presentations could be held at GBLA's office. We have a multipurpose room that can hold, you know, several people. And it would, it would be great for presentations because we already have the equipment set up there. Alternatively, we can offer presentations remotely, for example, through Zoom. That would be another option. And then third, we could also visit partners and provide community workshops at other offices or other buildings where the public could be invited. So that, those would be the venues that we could provide those services. As far as other partners go, I mean, we've, we've been working with Flood in the past. I mean, we've worked with the county. I mean, we have, we have partners and all throughout the, the community that we regularly work with. And so that would also be a component to provide resources to people that need it to help prevent eviction.
Okay, finally, we asked a question regarding those who GBLA will not be able to serve. I believe we had this conversation a while back in terms of looking at a potential alternative firm that might be able to provide support for those who do not have legal status. But I think that's, that's a very difficult challenge. Could you describe that challenge for us?
Yeah, well, I think, I think the challenge here is that more often than not, evictions are related to money. And so if you have a defendant who is being evicted for non-payment of rent, that person probably doesn't have money to pay an attorney.
Yeah.
And so the private bar is, is probably not going to, you know, assist that defendant unless they're going to do so on a pro bono basis. So any profit law firm, any private practice is probably not going to make that a top priority. And so legal aid is there to fill in the gap. Unfortunately, because we receive federal funds, there is that restriction that we have to abide by. And so that's why we cannot serve certain types of persons.
Okay.
That's the challenge that we're, that we're facing.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cora.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, and it's always encouraging to see our city partner with local community organizations that are already doing the work and have been doing the work for a very long time. I have a lot of love for GBLA. As a young community organizer, we did a lot of work around education, justice within the Kern High School District. So that's where I first found my kind of first steps as a community organizer. So there were great people there who really taught me a lot as well. So thank you for continuing to do this great work. I am also building on questions asked by councilmember Arias and Vice Mayor Gonzalez in terms of how you, while I understand all the restrictions that are placed in serving those who have sensitive status in terms of their legal status, how do you, I know there are some exceptions, but which organizations are there? Like, can some of this capacity that we can potentially create here, can that be used to also seek out organizations? Or do you work closely with an organization similar to CRLA in order to kind of fulfill the needs of our undocumented populations?
Yeah, well, we do, we do often, you know, work with other organizations. CRLA typically doesn't provide eviction services as my understanding at the, at the level that, you know, GBLA does. You know, they're, they're in other areas of California as well, so they don't service the same jurisdiction that we do. You know, there's not many, I, I'm struggling to think of an organization in our area that provides this type of service other than GBLA. I think in the time that I, I was practicing as an attorney, I maybe only saw one case out of the hundreds that I, I saw where an attorney from the private bar actually defended a tenant. And, you know, typically if, if someone was not represented by GBLA, I mean, you know, the person was representing them, themselves. And so, so to answer your question, I mean, we do work with, with community partners, but there's not, there's not really anyone that I know of that does this type of work in our area.
In your years of being in the eviction kind of legal work, are there organizations that exist elsewhere that can be partnered with to bring them into Kern County to also fulfill serving the undocumented population? Like, I just, I'm very curious about how this kind of population gap is met. If we are, like, I'd like us to go, you know, be able to go as far as we can with it.
Yeah, so our, the restriction that we face would prevent us from co-counseling with someone, you know, who was helping an individual. The most that we could do would be to maybe refer someone over to another, another entity or another organization. So, I mean, unless there's a specific federal exception to representing someone who's undocumented, you know, we couldn't, we couldn't even co-counsel with that, with that organization, unfortunately.
Okay, so the federal restrictions that are placed on you all prevent you from co-counseling
Right.
Undocumented folks in court, okay. Are you personally aware of organizations that do serve this population that are not restricted by federal funding in the same way that can be a potential partner?
In our, in our area, no. You know, I'm aware of other organizations, for example, in Los Angeles, like the InterCity Law Center, who are not recipients of LSC funds, but, I mean, they don't, they don't serve outside of the Los Angeles area. In, in our area, I'm not, I'm not aware of any organization that provides this service.
Okay. I think as this pilot program develops, I would like to see maybe a, maybe we bring folks in and, and kind of help meet this gap. And if we don't have it in our area, how do we create, how do we create that here? And, or how do we bring attorneys in, into Bakersfield or Kern County that can serve that population group to kind of at least spur the service needed for those who are the absolutely most vulnerable? And I'd, I'd like to hopefully see some, something come out of the pilot program that we are creating here and, and that being one component of it. So that was just one of the questions I had and one of the thoughts I had. My second question is, within this pilot program, how do you all build, how do you all plan to build capacity to serve multilingual populations that, you know, speak Mexico, Tagalog, Punjabi?
Sure. Yeah, well, I mean, we, we already, we already serve persons who are of limited English proficiency, for example, by the use of Language Line. It's an, a real-time, on-demand language interpretation and translation service. So for example, you know, if someone comes to our office who speaks only, only Russian, we can pick up the phone, get a translator on the phone right away and help that person. So that's not a problem for us.
Okay, and in this education program that you're doing here within the workshops, will you also be designing like multilingual workshops as well?
So right now, our plan is to do both English and Spanish. You know, I suppose we could, we could look into other languages as well.
Yeah, I'd love to see that as well. I think that'll kind of serve our, our county and our community in a more full way. And then my last question is, just within your own legal experience, can you share how much, whether it's maybe not at GBLA, but on average, how much does a family spend on legal fees? How much is expected on average to be spent when they are fighting an eviction? Just to kind of give a number to it.
How much a family spends?
Or a household, yeah, an individual on average?
Well, I, I think it's important to understand that a lot of our clients are low-income. And so most of them will qualify for a fee waiver, which means that they don't have to pay filing fees to the court. And then if they seek GBLA services, you know, they, we don't charge them for services. You know, they're, they're free services and the, the cost is, is, you know, from our funders. So I don't, don't know that a, a family actually spends money in defending an eviction.
I meant, sorry, I meant without GBLA, how much would a family on average, like, without this aid, without this program, what would a family who is most vulnerable be looking to spend? And what would that look like without having these resources was really my question.
I mean, it could, it could, it could vary. I mean, you know, attorneys bill at different rates, but I mean, assuming that an attorney bills at three or $400 an hour, I mean, it could easily, easily balloon into a, a large bill. And if someone already owes rent, I mean, it's going to be financially traumatic for any, any family that have to pay a private attorney. I, I can't imagine what, what kind of stress that would put a family in. I mean, if, if a family is already struggling to pay their rent, the idea of having to pay a private attorney would be, I mean, if, me personally, it would just make me give up. It wouldn't even make me want to litigate, which would mean also that it would, it would discourage me from fully litigating a case to the full potential that it should. It would make me not want to go to trial, it would make me not want to file a motion for summary judgment if it was, even if I had merit in that motion, it would make me not want to purpound discovery, would make me just want to file an answer and try to get the case over and done with as quickly as possible, which would only help the landlord. So I, if I had to guess, I mean, there's summary proceedings and a case can last anywhere from two to three months if it's litigated properly. I mean, you're, you're talking about $10,000 to $20,000 easily on just attorney's fees. Not, and that's not even counting the debt that, you know, the family has to, you know, potentially face.
That's crippling, yeah, truly.
In addition to that, not only would, would a family have to pay their own attorney, but, and the, and the potential back rent, they, if they are not the prevailing party in a case, they could end up having to pay the landlord's attorney as well, which could be another $10,000, $20,000.
Wow.
So the, the, the cost is astronomical.
Yeah, thank you for sharing that. And I don't know if someone's already asked, but in the program, in your existing program, how many referrals have you all done for eviction so far, evictions?
What do you mean by referrals?
How many referrals have you received or, I guess, cases have you worked through?
Um, how many cases? I mean, per year, we, we see anywhere between maybe 350 to 500 cases that we actually, you know, serve. We receive more requests than that, but, you know, like I mentioned, we can't help everyone. But, yeah, we easily service three to 500, 300 to 500 cases a year.
Wow.
Just evictions.
That's an incredible number. Thank you for your time and thank you for answering my questions.
Yeah, of course.
Councilmember Cora.
Thank you, Mayor. When the leadership council came to my office, we had a great meeting. I enjoyed speaking with all of them. We did come to some conclusions, though, that, excuse me, that there are good landlords and there are bad landlords. And there are good renters and there are bad renters. And we all agreed on that. What I understood coming out of that conversation with them and that there would be legal counsel provided for those landlords that were good landlords that don't have the financial means to be able to fight those cases where a tenant just, just won't leave, you know, that they're stuck with them. And I know that, before you answer the question, I know that there are other stakeholders in the community that we've received communication from that are concerned about this program because they're concerned about those good landlords that could be taken advantage of through this or those good landlords that need counsel and won't have the same opportunity as the tenant. So how would you, your firm, how would you address that issue with landlords?
Well, we wouldn't represent landlords at all. So I just want to make that clear.
Okay.
We would only represent defendant, defendant tenants. And so, yeah, I mean, I, I agree with you. There's, there's good landlords and there's, there's bad landlords as well as good renters and bad ones. But our focus would be to help, you know, the tenants, the defendants who are low-income and need, need that, that assistance.
So if this program were expanded, City Manager Clegg, can you help us with that? Would only tenants be covered under the, the city dollars or would this be expanded to where those landlords that are in, as great a need that could be losing their property be able to tap into it?
Thank you, councilmember. And if I may, actually, it's a little bit of a clarifying question, even on my own part, that I would just ask a, a little more detail of a question.
Okay.
Is that, that the distinction between representing clients as, as well as those that are, you know, receiving just workshop information? Are landlords eligible to receive sort of the, the, the workshop information that would be available under this scope of work?
Yeah, that's a, that's a good, thank you for clarifying, that's a good question. So, I mean, the, the workshops would be general information. So, you know, if, if, if a landlord wanted to attend the workshop, they'd be more than welcome. The reason it's, it's, it's allowable is because general information is not legal advice. So a workshop can, can be attended by the public. It doesn't have to be a landlord, it can be, it can be just a general member of the community, can be a community partner, anyone is, would be welcome to attend.
Well, I'm glad to hear that, but it still doesn't answer my question.
Thank you, councilmember. And I just wanted to clarify that piece, that some of the educational pieces are available to a broader audience. But as far as the legal advice, legal representation, it is, as, as proposed on the agenda tonight is limited to tenant-based legal advice while the educational piece is available to all.
So again, it, would it be a possibility if this program were expanded, that it could be expanded to accept legal advice from landlords also?
Yeah.
Because there are landlords that aren't wealthy. There are landlords that maybe this was their, you know, their, their parents' property they inherited and they're not, they don't have means themselves, but they haven't given up this home, it's not worth a whole lot, but it's worth a lot to them. And if they lose it, then they lose that income, which could be detrimental to them as a landlord. So that's my question.
Yeah, thanks, councilmember, Mayor and council. That's a policy choice of the council. I would clarify early in my response that I think, you know, based on the, the feedback that I'm, you know, hearing and more familiar with as we prepared this agenda item, that it would probably be important to have a different legal entity that could represent landlords because you wouldn't create a conflict of interest between GBLA and, and another entity. But as a policy choice, the council could allocate additional funds to the city overall program that could be allocated to, to that purpose, yes.
Okay. I think the stakeholders that are concerned about this would like to hear that because it, it can't just be one-sided, I don't believe, with taxpayer dollars because we're all taxpayers. And we should all be, we're talking about equality all the time. We need to be, we need to be thinking about equality in that area, too. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a question, how big your existing staff is?
It's a great question. Well, our staff right now is about 65. Just this year alone, we've, we've hired, you know, several individuals, several attorneys, and so we're growing. But 65 is our staff.
And what percentage of your work is this type of eviction protection work?
If I had to estimate, it's probably between 65% to 70. That's the majority of our, our work.
So you, and you focused on all of Kern County?
Yes.
And, and what percentage is city of Bakersfield?
It's the majority of it, probably 70%.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I had read the letter from the Board of Realtors and had several calls from them on their concerns, which I think are very legitimate. I don't, you know, we were, we were interested, we're saying in the bad landlords, but it seems to me we're not going to be dealing with the big corporate landlords. I think they can handle all of this on their own. It's going to be landlords who have smaller number of units, aren't as sophisticated. At a minimum, I would want to see the workshops, the outreach to landlords and tenants because if landlords are educated, we may not have so many problems. if landlords are educated, we may not have so many problems. A lot of this has to come from ignorance of the law, and so they may be a more productive target than the tenants to, as a preventative measure, because I think a lot of small, they may have a duplex, or they may have, you know, four duplexes or something, but they certainly, they don't have money for an attorney and they aren't well-versed in the law. So I would hope you could assure us that the outreach for the workshops would be to everyone, because you would really want to see small-time landlords in there, learning about the law. And I, you know, I agree, it's probably would have to be some other organization if we, in the future, create something for the landlords, because they might, I can see conflict of interest. But I do think that, see how it goes the first year, but I really think part of the agenda has to be that we find some sort of legal aid for landlords who don't, you know, have a few units, don't know how to handle this, because they're the ones who get stuck with the squatters. I mean, the lady who sat right next to me for many years here, she had like a couple of duplexes, and so a lot of her retirement income based on it, she got the squatters. I don't know if she got them out after a year, but once they squat and you lose all your income, but you have to make the payment on the loan, it can drive you into bankruptcy. There is a problem with bad tenants as much as with bad landlords. So I'd like to, I'd like to see us explore that in the coming months, and definitely before we renew for another year, make that a consideration, the council does. Can we, can we get some sort of legal aid for landlords? Maybe there's a threshold, it can't be for people who have 1,000 units, it can't be for the big guys, it's for the smaller landlords. And the other question is, I know you're attorneys, but when people meet with you and have a problem, will you be contacting the landlords to, before everybody goes, hopefully they're not already in legal proceeding, because then, but even so, settlement is always better than a court case that takes forever.
I agree.
Do you envision yourself meeting with landlords and tenants and trying to work something out? If the tenant can't pay, you know, there's a certain amount of time they're going to have to go, or maybe you can find rent subsidies, counseling, it just seems to me, working together to solve the problem rather than months in court and all the legal fees for the landlord. That's kind of the worst outcome. It would be better if you're more counselors with the court as a last resort. I mean, do you see that happening often, or what's your experience so far?
I mean, ideally, we would love to see settlements happen before someone is placed into the court system, because once an eviction is started, the problem is that a landlord has already invested the money and expense of hiring counsel, and usually, you know, they, it makes settlement that much more difficult. So, you know, I agree, if we can settle a case before it gets to the eviction stage, I think that benefits everyone. You know, we actually do that. When, for example, if someone receives a termination notice, that's a no-fault eviction, typically those are 30 days or 60 days, that gives us some time to actually negotiate a settlement, where either there's a soft landing, where the defendant agrees, or the tenant agrees to leave upon a certain amount of time, thereby saving the landlord, you know, money and the defendant's potential judgment on their record. But it also gives us an opportunity to try to work something out, where housing can be maintained. So, yeah.
Okay.
GBLA actually does that already.
The workshops seem to me to be extremely important.
Yeah.
To educate both tenants and landlords.
I agree.
So during that beginning 30 days, people have a chance to work something out.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
Thanks.
Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. Two quick questions, actually, following up on Councilmember Freeman's points. Can you give us a ballpark range of how many of these eviction cases actually end up in litigation?
How many end up in litigation? You know, I wouldn't know that information. I would have to know how many landlords have issued termination notices. I mean, I would guess that, if I had to speculate and guess, I would say that, you know, a small percentage of them actually go to, you know, the eviction stage, and that landlords, because nothing really to stop a landlord from drafting a piece of paper and placing it on someone's door and saying that if you don't do X, Y, Z, you're going to be evicted. That's a very easy, quick notice to draft up and serve, whereas the eviction, you know, takes time. You usually have to draft paperwork, you have to get a summons stamped by the clerk and served, and so there's a very lengthy process that happens with the eviction. If I had to speculate it, you know, a small percentage would go to eviction.
I appreciate that, because I think that there's this, you know, myth out there, I suppose, amongst landlords, that, you know, with this program, that, you know, GBLA is going to be able to, you know, enter into many lawsuits across our entire city for every single one of these eviction cases, and that's just simply not the case, based on what I'm hearing from you.
Well, it's also, it's also important to understand that, I mean, if you're talking about an affirmative lawsuit, you're talking about a completely different ballgame, because the way the law is crafted, an eviction is essentially known as a summary proceeding, which means it's a civil case that ordinarily would take two to five years condensed into a time period of three to five months at the most. And if a tenant decides to sue a landlord, their case is going to last, you know, two to three years, maybe five years, whereas the eviction could last a couple of months. So it really, it's not, you can't do the same volume affirmatively as you could with evictions. I mean, there's eviction mills out there that just crank out hundreds of evictions on a regular basis, but as far as I know, there's no law firm out there that does the same for affirmative litigation against landlords, just doesn't happen.
And then, changing gears on you, in terms of success, you know, 300 to 500 eviction cases a year throughout the county, you know, how many of them are you successfully, is your team successfully able to win on behalf of the tenant?
Well, I consider a win settlement. I don't consider a win where we obtain judgment. So I would say that, you know, every time we settle a case, that's a win for everybody. So if I include that in my definition, about 80%.
Eighty percent?
Mm-hmm.
Great. My last ask, you know, and bringing this back to the homeless, Housing and Homelessness Committee, or even in a year out, when you bring back, hopefully, another presentation with the data to this council, is that we actually track the number of folks that we have to turn away on a monthly basis, and really start to define why it is that we were able, we are unable to provide that service, whether that be capacity issues or, you know, one of the classes of folks that GBLA is not able to provide services to. That data would be really helpful to me. With the numbers that you gave us, you know, on the upper end, you know, that's about, with the $350,000, it's about 150 additional cases a year, and we know that there's a much larger number of evictions that take place every single year. So that data would be super helpful as we kind of take our next steps. Thank you.
Understood.
What percentage of the eviction cases that you defend are related to not inability to, not related to somebody's inability to pay, but rather related to property damage, something illegal that really is more on the fault of the tenant versus just a financial issue?
Well, you know, the majority, the majority of the eviction cases that we see are related to non-payment of rent, about 90%. Other types of cases that we see are no-fault evictions, where there's a just cause reason, for example, the landlord intends to do substantial remodel, or the landlord intends to move into the property. There's some other minor exceptions, maybe a breach of a covenant of the lease, maybe there's some other violation of law, like a nuisance. I think that relates to your question about property damage. It's a very small percentage, it's under 10%.
Thanks. Ms. Mayor.
Just a quick question. So I think, Councilmember Freeman actually asked a really good question about, you know, the cost related to each case, and it just, it's a spur of thought, really, there is, this is a flat fee contract, it's not like you're billing per hour. So there's actually an incentive for you to move towards settlement, is that right?
Even if it wasn't a flat fee, we would want to settle quickly, because it's in our client's interest and
Sure.
The court's interest as well.
Mm-hmm, to settle it and move on.
Yeah.
Find some resolution.
Yes.
Okay, I appreciate that, thanks.
Councilmember Curry.
Well, I'm just curious, because I know there are bad landlords out there, and say you have a tenant that comes to you that has been unfairly treated because the house is full of cockroaches, they won't spray, the windows are broken, their energy is going out the window, literally. So what kind of influence do you have over those types of cases where you've got that bad actor? How do you all settle those types of things? Or they're illegally raising the rent much quicker than what they can do, or it's supposed to do, rather?
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good question. So as far as the habitability goes, you know, sometimes there's a misconception generally that if the property is uninhabitable, or that there's some habitability issue, that that all of a sudden wipes out the rent that's due, or that, you know, if the tenant can prove that in court, that they win the case and game over for the landlord. The way it really works is that, you know, if you were to raise, as a tenant, if you were to raise a habitability defense in an eviction, the court, if the court agrees that there is a habitability breach on the landlord's part, then the judgment would be a conditional judgment, meaning that the tenant would have about five days to pay the difference between the rent that was owed minus the reduction of value from that habitability breach. And if the tenant doesn't pay that in five days, then, you know, the judgment goes into the landlord's favor. It's the same concept with an illegal rent increase. If a landlord has legally increased the rent, it doesn't mean that no money is due to the landlord, it just means that that portion that was illegally raised probably wouldn't be collectible by the landlord. So there probably could still be money owed by the tenant if, even if the tenant can prove that there was an illegal rent increase.
So all those decisions, then, you all are just giving advice that can be determined by the court, and the court's making the final decision, and you're just representing that tenant in court against, say, that bad actor? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, the judge and the commissioner judicial officer makes the ultimate decision if we go to trial.
Okay.
But if we settle, then the parties get to make the decision. So it's better for everybody that way.
Right, okay, thank you.
If I may.
Thank you for your presentation.
I just wanted to follow up on that last point, an important addition that we've been discussing as staff, related to habitability, because this program is largely designed to offer these workshops, as well as legal advice related to evictions. And so I'm sure habitability will come up naturally, and we know that GBLA does help individuals around habitability. But this program for eviction protection, or eviction prevention, is actually not designed to address all of those habitability issues. And so that's one of the reasons that we tried to take a little bit of a step back and look at all of our stabilization programs, because we anticipate that as tenants are more aware of their rights related to habitability, there may be more requests for code inspections, and there may be more requests for landlords to address habitability issues. And we will need to be prepared as a city to contemplate whether we're going to provide resources or programs that also address habitability specifically, because this is more about the legal advice related to evictions. And so with that, we actually have a few more slides that we're going to cover, and that's maybe a good transition point unless there are other questions for GBLA.
Thank you, sir. And we'll go back to staff. Thank you for, GBLA, for your presentation. We'll go back to staff, Ms. Spiers, and then we'll go to the public for comment.
Thank you. I did want to go back to this slide, because this is what was requested in proposals as part of our RFP, that the legal aid meet with tenants to discuss eligibility, act as a liaison between tenants and property managers or landlords, and provide legal aid counsel to tenants, and it was specific for low-income individuals. As far as the education program, we did request that it be based on California Tenants, A Guide to Residential Tenants and Landlord Rights and Responsibilities. And I took out the slide, and now I wish I wouldn't have, because it's very specific in this guideline, what is your right from the day you enter your rental unit, filling out the paperwork? What do you do if you have issues? Going through all of that. And so I just wanted to kind of point that out. So what we've been talking about doing, because as we talk about, you know, what housing looks like across the spectrum, what do the issues look like across the spectrum, are there other ways to have greater analysis? We have several documents, and there's one thing I hate, is when the city does research in a document and does an affordable housing strategy and then puts it on the shelf. We have all of these tools at our disposal, the housing element is one of them, there's a lot of analysis and background and details that are included in that. It is policy-driven, like City Manager Clegg mentioned, we have the Affordable Housing Strategy, and then with homeless and their strategic action plan, it is about increasing outflow. And so we have some benchmark city research, as well as additional best practice. And so what we're requesting at council at this time is to provide us the opportunity to look at some potential programs. So like Christian mentioned, the substandard housing, I've had conversations with Mr. Burns already about the anticipation that once we do start to educate individuals, that if you do have a bug infestation, pay your rent, but go through this other process, and then that wouldn't be something that GBLA is taking care of. It would be something that came back to the city and is going to create an inflow of calls to our code enforcement, to our building department, and so we've been talking through that. We do have best practices to maybe deal with that. So some of these are potential programs that we could look at, substandard housing, rehabilitation, could there be funding to work on these houses that we know have habitability issues? Rental registry is one of those, not to go after the good players, but what does our housing stock really look like? Do we have something that we know where there's availability? And this is very much a conversation that's happening in the homeless, is having a registry that kind of, we know where there's potential to place people, we have contact information. Frequently, when we talk about bad landlords, we are talking about out-of-town owners, we're not necessarily talking about people who are invested in our community, who aren't easy to reach. The police department for loitering has the ability to contact the building owner, and so similar to that, if we had something in lines with a rental registry, that we knew how to get ahold of a property owner, if we had a lot of complaints on that. Residential hotel motel inspection, this has become very popular in the last couple of years. The planning commission has seen a couple of items, we've even purchased a motel to renovate into affordable housing units, possibly starting there with an inspection program. The Community Land Trust, we're looking at several types of construction, we're not just looking at multifamily, we are looking at homeownership opportunities, especially when you look at, if citywide homeownership is 60%, you look in our prosperity neighborhoods and homeownership is about 20%, and so how can we incentivize that? That's one of the construction types in the Community Land Trust that's being evaluated. We did put, City Council put a million dollars towards home weatherization and home rehabilitation, and a lot of that is to keep people in their homes when the roof is gone, when they don't have any heat, when homeowners find themselves in those situations, and they frequently do, they will sometimes leave that housing unit. And so if you're able to age in place in your existing home, that's one of the home weatherization programs. We've also talked about residential facade improvement grants, similar to what was previously touted as Neighborhood Stabilization Program, a program through HUD. Do you start to see neighborhoods reinvest in themselves when you incrementally do that? I think we're seeing in the downtown area, the power of facade improvements, that's a potential program that we could look at, rental assistance, how do we make it possible to expand some of those? Expansion of an eviction protection, an eviction prevention program, you've already been talking about, it's possible we may have those needs now. And then the adoption of strategic land use policies, that's really towards incentivizing growth. We talked that we have a capacity issue, we have a supply issue, adoption of strategic land use policies could be one of the potential programs that we look at. And then how do we fund these things? We can't constantly go back to the general fund well, especially as we're looking at the budget's tightening and decreased revenues. So we've utilized So we've utilized ARPA substantially, but we have to have, any program that we have has to be under contract by December. We have, in the past, utilized our funding resources, Affordable Housing Trust Fund, we received $5 million, we went and got it Local Housing Trust Fund, which was state grants, and leveraged our money that way. We utilized our Housing and Urban Development, the CDVG, the Home, APWA, ESG. We utilize the heck out of those funds. And so we annually bring you that report. We're getting ready to undergo our five-year consolidated plan, and that's how we're going to spend the next five years of funding. On average, we get about $8 million a year that does get divvied up into different buckets. Philanthropy, how can we be working with our landlords? How can we be working with our local investors to see about possibly incentivizing or having the community reinvest in itself? And with that, did you have anything you would like to add?
In closing, the big takeaway is that we recognize that there's more than one way to address stabilization and prevention. And staff will go and do this homework and identify funding sources, as well as partners. I do want to highlight that really quickly, that the city should not necessarily be doing all of this type of preventative work. There are other agencies that are in the space, and they should be also implementing programs that are in support of the Homeless Collaborative Action Plan. But there are some areas where it does make sense for the city. So we'll go back and do this homework and come back with additional research and recommendations for council about where it makes the most sense to make our investments around stabilization.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg and Ms. Byers. Thank you. And now, Madam Clerk, would you please call the public speakers who have requested to speak on this item, please?
Mayor Go, we've received three speaker cards regarding this item. The public speakers are Sandra Placencia, Antonio Reyes, and Wendell Wesley Jr.
Welcome.
Hello, Sandra Placencia, a current policy advocate with Leadership Council. Just wanted to thank the city for starting up this program. I really wanted to focus on some of the dialogue that was focused on today. The big one being, why do we not push for representation of landlords, right? And the reason being is because there is a huge gap that hasn't been talked about. John Donigan from The Californian actually said, in an article a few weeks ago, 72% of landlords have representation in court when less than 2% of tenants do. That is the gap that we are trying to address when it comes to the eviction prevention program, right? That is what we want to help. We want to make sure that the folks that GBLA cannot help due to capacity because of restrictions are being helped throughout the city, right? And those are the folks that I get calls from on a weekly basis. I know a lot of the council members get calls from these folks, also probably on a daily basis, right, as elected officials. So I really wanted to highlight the fact that we are trying to address the gap that we are seeing from residents, right? And as Valentin clearly stated, residents who, or families, right, will have to endure $10,000 to $20,000 of debt when they go in through evictions. I cannot afford that, right? I would end up on the street, or I would have to move in with my parents. A lot of the families that we work with have to endure that as well. And they shouldn't have to, right? Because if they cannot be represented with the funding allocated by the city, they should not have to endure that. The last thing I wanted to say is, I think a lot of the programs that the city is presenting are really great, but I really wanted to focus on the fact that a lot of the programs that are mentioned up there, we have suggested through our Housing Element comments, right? So we really encourage the city to keep working with us, because the EPP program, eviction rights of counsel, inclusionary zoning, permanent rental assistance, these are all programs that could qualify under the presentation that was just given by staff. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Placencia. Next speaker, please.
Antonio Reyes.
Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Antonio Reyes. Good afternoon, Mayor Go, Vice Mayor Gonzalez, and all City Council members. I'm with the Associated Students Incorporated, or Student Government, at CSU Bakersfield, and it is my pleasure to represent our community of over 9,000 students as the Vice President of Legislative Affairs. I come to you today to express our strong support for the allocation of $2 million to the Eviction Protection Program. At CSUB, we are acutely aware of the challenges faced by our student body concerning housing. This past year alone, 25 students have relied on emergency funding due to precarious living situations, and approximately 10% of our student population experiences housing instability annually. That is over 900 students facing housing instability each year. These numbers represent individuals whose academic success and personal well-being are being compromised by the threat of eviction and homelessness. I draw personal experience with this issue from my two and a half years as a housing navigator at the Open Door Network. But let me start by saying that I have great respect and admiration for the folks who work every day to change the lives for the most vulnerable in our community at organizations like these. The work there is hard. There were days I had to tell families that they were going to have to sleep in their vehicle, or that they were a few dollars over income and they didn't qualify for services anymore. But some of the toughest stories I heard came from students or student parents who were just trying to better their lives and lift their families up from financial insecurity. We often talk about wanting to see the city rise and seeing our residents rise with it. One of the most effective ways that residents of Bakersfield can rise economically is with a degree, which is why we shouldn't make it difficult for students that are experiencing housing instability to get services. Programs like the EPP are crucial to helping mitigate these situations before they happen. Investing $2 million in the EPP aligns with the city's commitment to improving the quality of life for residents, and by extension, our students at CSUB. I look forward to working with the members of the City Council on how to best serve our students and to seeing the City Council take decisive action to support the eviction protection program and address the ongoing housing crisis in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Madam Clerk, would you just hold for a minute? We have a lot of people at the door. Can we have you, everybody get seated, please, who is in the back? And then, officers, if you could just hold the door, have the people stand in the lobby until our last speaker finishes, so we don't have an interruption there. Those of you who want to put your cards up here, if you just hold off so Mr. Wesley can speak, we'll wrap this up in just a minute. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Wesley.
Okay, Wendell Wesley Jr. Thank you, Mayor Go, Vice Mayor, City Council, City Management. You know, I was turned down by GBLA twice. The second time it was because our apartment complex gave us a rent increase of $100. That was way over the 10%. They gave that to everyone. So I knew they were full of it, I tried to get help, I was turned away. So I'm not for sure about GBLA. Maybe it was just color of my skin. I don't know. I hate to think that, but I couldn't see a reason why I needed to be turned away. I was a resident there, unless there was an age restriction. So show me a lazy landlord, we're going to have a problem with that apartment complex or house having a habitability issue. Okay, landlords need to be responsible and tell their tenants what they expect of them when they see a little bit of water coming down from the sink, the toilet, or whatever. Okay? So we all need to work together, but the reality is, we have a lot of lazy landlords out there. We have a lot of good landlords, but we're not trying to focus on the good landlords. We're focusing on the bad ones. They're not doing our city any favors by being that way. And if the tenant doesn't know what the expectations are, then the place goes to rack and ruin. So we really need this program. We're still going to ask for this funding, because we believe that no one's going to do it better than we are. Because we are in there with the community, and we are aware of the problems in the situation. I don't believe GBLA really is aware of the problems in the situation that faces tenants. And we need a large media campaign so that we can educate the general public, the tenants, and landlords as well. Because, you know, by the time you get to a workshop, it's too late for most of those people. You know, we need to start educating the general public now about what their role is as a tenant, in order so that they can stay housed.
Mr. Wesley, thank you, your time's up.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe, Madam Clerk, was that our last speaker there?
Yes, Mayor Go.
All right, so I'll go back now to council for any further comments. Sign them.
Motion to receive and file.
You have a motion, please cash your votes.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. And with that, we stand adjourned at 5:09. We will resume the next meeting at 5:25. No, we don't have a close, no, no closed session, but let's take 15 minutes. Sorry to keep all of you waiting, but our last meeting ran quite long. Thank you. Sorry to keep all of you waiting, but our last meeting ran quite long. Thank you.
the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 10:00 AM, and the following Wednesday at 7:00 PM. You can download the agenda for this meeting at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Presiding over this evening's meeting, the Honorable Mayor Karen K. Go.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 5:15 regular City Council meeting of June 26, 2024. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Arias.
Here.
Councilmember Weir.
Councilmember Smith.
I'm here.
Councilmember Freeman.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Here.
Councilmember Cor.
Here.
Thank you. Welcome to all of you. Again, we apologize for the delay in the start. We have an interpreter present tonight for Spanish language, and I'll now invite the interpreter to give instructions for those who might need to use the service. You're on this side.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Stefania. Tenemos Fernando de Linguistica. Vamos a proveer la interpretación en español. Si es que ocupan un dispositivo, por favor levanten la mano. Good afternoon. My name is Stefania. We have Fernando. We're with Linguistica, and we'll be offering simultaneous interpretation. If anyone needs a device, please invite people to raise their hand or to go up there for a device. Thank you.
Thank you. And for the benefit of our interpreter, please pace yourself and speak clearly into the microphone during your comments, and this will help our interpreter to clearly translate your message. At this time, we have the pleasure of having Reverend Hector Lopez, who is the pastor of St. Philip the Apostle Church in Bakersfield. He'll offer the invocation. We're just so grateful for your outreach to those who have challenges in terms of food insecurity. I know the members of your congregants have been collecting food through Catholic charities and through the gleaners. Thank you so much, Pastor, for that. Following the invocation, Erika De La Cruz, who's a city fellow and a graduate of CSU Bakersfield, will lead us in the pledge. She's a fellow with our City Manager's Office. She recently graduated from CSUB, majoring in Business Administration, concentration in Small Business Management, where she served under the Associated Students, Inc., Go Runners, and she plans to pursue a master's in Business Administration and work for the City of Bakersfield. Would you all please stand?
Thank you, Mayor, for the opportunity to, the invitation to lead the invocation at this evening's meeting. It's an honor to be with all of you. I invite us to pray. Loving and provident God, we come before you this evening with grateful hearts, seeking your wisdom and guidance as we gather for this City Council meeting. You have bestowed many gifts and blessings upon our city. You have placed us here in the midst of a rich heritage, a variety of cultures, and a wide diversity of people we call our friends and neighbors. We give you thanks for this opportunity to serve the residents of Bakersfield in the building up of a strong, healthy, and flourishing community for everyone, one in which every person can grow, succeed, and be happy. Grant the members of the council the wisdom to make decisions that are just and fair for all members of our city. Give us the courage to face the challenges ahead. Fill us with compassion to understand the needs of our neighbors, and above all, inspire us to work together with open hearts and minds, always striving for greater unity and cooperation. Lord God, we ask that your peace might reign in our hearts and in our streets. Help us to build a place of belonging where every member feels welcome, valued, and respected. May the strength of this community shine forth in the way we treat the weakest among us. Lead us to greater solidarity as we share our goals, hopes, and dreams. Give us the patience to listen to one another and the strength to overcome our differences. Guide us in our efforts to work together in collaboration, always seeking the common good. Look upon us with kindness and bless the work we do. We ask all of this, placing our trust in your providence and care for each of us. For you live and reign forever and ever. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Erika.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. Thank you, Erika. You may be seated. Here are a few guidelines to help our meeting run smoothly. We'd request that you turn off your phones. Please be courteous in the use of cameras and videos. For safety reasons and as a courtesy to others, no signs are allowed in the council chamber or in the lobby. Applause is allowed during the presentations portion of the meeting, but not during the other portions of the meeting. Everyone in attendance is expected to adhere to the rules of decorum established by resolution of the City Council. Failure to abide by the city's rules of decorum, including any disruptive behavior that interferes with our ability to have an orderly and efficient meeting, prevents the City Council from conducting the business of the city. Consider this a first warning to everyone in attendance, that conduct that disrupts the meeting may result in your removal from the meeting and/or the chambers being cleared. Behavior that disrupts the meeting includes repetitive statements, shouting, interrupting staff or presenters during the meeting, speaking out of turn, outbursts from the audience, and surpassing the time limit. Madam Clerk, next item?
Public statements.
Thank you. In keeping with the council's new resolution, public statements are now received at different times. times depending on the item. I will call on the city clerk to call for public statements at the appropriate time, so please listen carefully for the correct time to speak. If you wish to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and place it in the tray on the counter next to the speaker's podium. We ask that you mark whether you're here to speak on an item listed on tonight's agenda or on a matter not on the agenda. Speakers who do not identify a specific agenda item will be presumed speakers for the non-agenda public statements. If you're here to speak on an item not listed on the meeting agenda, you will be called first to speak. Statements are given a two-minute time limit per speaker, 20 minutes total for all non-agenda item public statements. If you're here to speak on an item listed on the agenda, I will call for you at a later time, so please listen carefully. If public statements become disruptive and I have to clear the chambers to regain orderly -- to regain order of the meeting, you will be called in one at a time to provide your public statement when your item is called. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items not on the agenda?
Mayor Go, we've received nine speaker cards for items not on tonight's agenda. The first three public speakers will be Florence Marshall Darrow, Susan Colstead, and Johnny Olagaz.
Thank you. And Ms. Marshall?
Hi.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
My name is Florence Marshall Darrow, and I work for Golden Empire Transit, and I'm here to talk about our transit board. And I would like -- I'm not happy with our leadership of the board that you guys have elected. These past few years, we've been having problems with them, and a few of them have been in office for quite a number of years. One of them's been in for 10 years, and plus, she has, I think, another five more years listed on this, or at least four. And I think that I'm asking you guys, the ones that you've elected, if you guys can reconsider of having them replaced, because I'm not happy with their leadership with the things that have recently been happening there. That's about it.
Thank you, Ms. Marshall.
Thanks.
Next speaker, please.
Susan Colstead.
And following her will be Johnny. So Johnny, if you can make your way to front row, that would be helpful, save some time. Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Hi. My name is Susan Colstead. My husband, James Colstead, has been working for GET for 22 and a half years, and they recently rehired the new CEO. Everybody was pleased with him. He's trying to be innovative and put new things out there, and then they go and fire him. And there have been drivers that have said that with Karen King, they didn't get much interaction from her for open-door policy or suggestions, et cetera, whereas Mr. Tree has been quite the opposite. And everybody has well received -- has been very receptive from Mr. Tree, and he has done a lot in trying to push GET forward further in the 21st century and make it more efficient. And even a couple of the things that he has suggested, the board actually even adopted last night. So what's the problem? They have not established, they have not discussed, said anything about it. And I'm asking the same thing as Florence, that you remove the people that you appointed. Please.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Johnny, followed by Yolanda Gaita Hayman, followed by Frances Rubio.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Johnny Olagaz. So, one question. I've been looking into what paperwork and what qualifications it takes to run for a city council. I noticed that the website has little to no information. I myself have figured it out. I called. Would it be possible to update that for future candidates or people who may be interested in running for local office? Information is power, and with no information, we are not promoting a knowledgeable, engaged, or inclusive community. So that's what I'm here to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. If I could just ask staff to take a look at that. I myself have also looked for the same exact information and have struggled to find that basic information on the elections process and that information relevant to potential candidates. I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Good afternoon. My name is Yolanda Gaita Hayman. I am also a coach operator at Golden Empire Transit. Myself and coworkers spoke to the Kern County Board of Supervisors yesterday at the 2:00 PM meeting, where they engaged and voiced their concern over the GET Board's action of initially terminating our CEO, Michael Tree, June 17th. At last night's GET Board meeting, the two county appointees abstained from voting to fire Mr. Tree. It was the two city appointees and the at-large member who voted to fire him. Therefore, there appears to be a split on the board, and we wonder why. Cindy Para, a city appointee, is the board chair. At last night's GET Board meeting, drivers voiced for the reinstatement of Michael Tree as our CEO, but felt the board showed no empathy. GET will now return to a state of turmoil, and you seriously need to question the current state of the board's leadership? How effective has Ms. Para been guiding the Transit District? In 2014, the City Council removed both of its GET appointees due to complaints. Now, a decade later, your appointees are under criticism again. Keeping Cindy Para and Carlos Bello on the GET Board does not appear to be improving the Transit District's image. Are they acting in the best interest of the city? We shouldn't have to come here to bother you with the Transit District's problems, but we will bring our concerns to you, the people we vote into office, if action is not taken. The Transit District should be governed effectively, so City Council does not have to intervene. We are asking for Cindy Para and Carlos Bello to resign as Board of Directors at Golden Empire Transit District, or we request that City Council act on replacing both immediately.
Your time is up. Can you bring your comments to a close, please?
Okay. Thank you.
You can go ahead and finish the last sentence.
We will continue to fight for what we believe is in the best interest of all of us and our community.
Thank you.
Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Frances Rubio, followed by Kev, followed by Carmen.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Frances Rubio. I'm here today as an employee here for 30-plus years to address some issues of Golden Empire Transit employees. There's several issues. One, there appears to be an ongoing problem with the appointees that the City Council has selected as board members. In 2014, the City Council removed both its appointees as a result of a strike that occurred mounting to public dissatisfaction with these new routes systems that were implemented during the fall of 2012. The City Council's goal was to replace these appointees with more responsive people who would work to solve GET problems. But unfortunately, these two replacements have only caused more problems over the past decade. Number two, your appointees have been on the GET Board for 10 years, plenty of time to solve problems and move the district forward. They have been given enough time, but nothing is better. You need to seriously think about how much longer you want these people to be on the board. Is it good to have people, have these people on the board that long, especially when they no longer, they serve, and the problems are just worse, are getting worse? So I ask you for the City Council to address these issues. We need City Council to support on these issue, ongoing problems that us, the employees, are tired of facing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rubio. Next speaker, please.
Kev, followed by Carmen, followed by Lisa Smith.
Please introduce yourself.
Hello. My comment today is for the community, so we can acknowledge how the city tends to operate, that we, the people, come here to advocate for improving the quality of life, that we ask for things because there are actual issues in the community that need to be addressed, and that at the same time, the city seemingly works against that, that as a community, we would ask for things like measures to ensure we mitigate climate change, yet the city will cut down trees a couple blocks from here, ones that would have cooled the area and provided hundreds of people of shade during notoriously hot summers, that for a time, peaceful Palestinian protesters came here asking for a simple ceasefire resolution, and they were met with intimidation, antagonization, and violence, that for years, people in this community have asked for police accountability and reform of a notoriously dangerous police force, and yet the city is still giving them hundreds of millions of dollars, passing recent resolutions to give them multiple types of surveillance software, ammunition surpluses, and power expansion, or the other issues that we bring here. They either get pushed aside, unaddressed, or forgotten. So we shouldn't glamorize any of the city's actions, whatever they take, because if we were poor or homeless, we wouldn't even be able to rely on them to treat us like humans. So please remember this when our needs as a community aren't met, that when the summers are too hot, when the water infrastructure fails, or when the things we want to see funded aren't funded properly because they have other priorities. Free Palestine.
Next speaker, please.
Carmen, followed by Lisa Smith, followed by Cecilia.
Please introduce yourself. I notice some of you are snapping, and that is disrupting the meeting, so I'm going to ask you to please stop. Carmen, go ahead.
Hello. I'm here once again to ask the City Council to pass a ceasefire resolution. I know that this will not stop the genocide in Gaza, but it will show the people of Bakersfield where their City Council stands on genocide, a genocide. It will show the City of Bakersfield that you are not okay with seeing children starved and blown to pieces. It will show that you do not support the United States funding the murder of over 40,000 people. Please consider looking into the ceasefire resolution that was given to you months ago. The City of Bakersfield told Parks and Rec to cut down the two trees on 21st and I Street. These trees provided shade and oxygen to our community, and I'm wondering why they were cut down. I'm hoping it wasn't to get rid of the homeless who would hang out there and rest under the shade. I am recommending that fruit trees be planted there in place, and that the City of Bakersfield stop cutting down healthy trees. I'm also here in support of the eviction prevention program, and urge you all to support our community and allocate funds to this program, because everyone deserves a home, including our undocumented community, and to also be treated with respect by their landlords. I'm also here to urge you to look into Patty Gray's son, Christian Gray, the man assaulting people in front of City Hall. Please do not let Christian Gray think it's okay to assault people because his mom is on the City Council. Also, I'm urging a thorough investigation into why 27-year-old Brandon Elliott Gabriel Flores was hit and killed by Police Officer Julian Garcia. The patrol car did not have their lights or sirens on when Brandon was hit. The officers must alert the public through the use of their lights and sirens, as indicated in California vehicle code 21055. Why does the community have to start a GoFundMe to pay for expenses instead of having it come out of police funding? A program you could take some funding from is the organized retail theft program that the state awarded the Bakersfield Police Department.
Carmen, your time is up. Go ahead and bring your comments to a close.
$6.2 million to prevent and respond to organized theft, motor vehicle accessory theft. They were responding to a motor vehicle theft, and this would be a very appropriate way to allocate funds to victims of the police department. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Lisa Smith, followed by Cecilia.
Please introduce yourself, and we will have staff help you. Can somebody help Ms. Smith turn that on, please?
I have my time reset.
Yes, we will.
Thank you.
Can somebody just help her with the?
I should know how to do this.
Oh, you have it over here.
I'm a teacher, right? But I'm on vacation, I guess.
It's on.
Thank you.
All right, welcome.
Is it okay?
Would you?
My name is Lisa Smith, and I am here to speak to you tonight about my friend, Stephanie Gatlin, who is a sometimes contributing writer to the Bakersfield Californian and is a longtime teacher at East High School. And she's a department chair working at KHSD this week, or this summer. She was near my home, which is one of the 22 county islands within metro Bakersfield, so it happened near my home, but it could affect any of your wards. When she went to a Starbucks and a person was screaming in the parking lot, she went around and went and took care of her business to get her breakfast, came back out, the woman stood between her and the car, raised a gun, pointed to her head, and said, "I'm gonna F' and kill you," and called her something, and pulled the trigger. Stephanie was lucky. It was either a replica gun or it jammed. But when I talked to her later, she told me that BPD informed her the area is so dangerous, they don't even go out there anymore. And part of that is because behavioral health has moved into the same building as Kern County Probation on Stockdale and Stein, on New Stein, right next to the recycle center, in the same parking lot with the smoke shop, a block away from four other mental health facilities, and a block from that, three other smoke shops that were existing together on the same corner. We run into this everywhere because the city and the county bump into each other, and one facility doesn't know what the other one's doing. Jeff Flores's office, that I know of, when I spoke to them, did not know that this facility was there. So my concern is this. We have 22 islands bumping into the city. We have businesses moving in without setback requirements by any ordinance, except for, like porno theaters from schools. We do not need these businesses dumped on us. Please do something to keep these businesses from all going into one area and to work with county so that you all know what each other is doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have her post of the event, and I would like to leave these packets.
Sure. You can just leave them right there, and we'll get them. The city clerk will -- yes, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Cecilia.
Please introduce yourself.
My name is Cecilia Marcial. I am a perinatal nurse in the City of Bakersfield, representing only myself, and I am here because I am appalled by your silence and your enabling of conflict between BPD against your constituents. How many peacebreakers do you need to feel safe? How many of us do you have to criminalize? You are enforcing state violence against us so that we will be silent, but jail is not worse than genocide. You are criminalizing our words while you remain complicit in ethnic cleansing, while you enable violence against the people you claim to represent. Just like the police in this building, you are abusing your power because you feel disrespected. Well, I don't respect you. Does that mean that I deserve to be treated as subhuman? While you faint out words, the settler colonial state of Israel is deliberately targeting healthcare workers and life-supporting infrastructure. You remain silent as they kill my colleagues and murder our children, while you threaten us with violence if we disrupt your important decisions. If your statements against the apartheid state do not matter, then why not make them? You are enabling white supremacy. I invite you to move away from the ties of supporting an apartheid regime equivalent to Nazi Germany, and then maybe your constituents will respect you. That is all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, is that the conclusion for the items not on the agenda?
That is correct, Mayor.
Thank you. We'll now move to public statements listed on -- oh, I'm sorry. Where is your -- did you --
Sorry.
Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Sorry, Mayor. My buttons not cooperating with me this evening.
Can you check the technology, please?
So I wanted to first comment on Ms. Smith's remarks. So I wanted to first comment on Ms. Smith's remarks. That experience obviously is pretty jarring. If city staff can reach out and if we can look into what were those comments made by the police officer, that seems a little odd to me. And then also, I think there is value to figure out some coordination. And also, I think underneath it all, there are some county pockets within that area that are problematic. And I think, you know, our larger goal to annex a lot of those unincorporated areas is ultimately a way to resolve some of this conflict in terms of jurisdiction questions. But certainly, we want to make sure that we get to the most acute issue right now related to the safety of that particular area. And I'd appreciate it if we can, if staff can work with Ms. Smith to identify both the situation, but then also address some of those chronic issues in the area. And then the other comment, I wanted to clarify regarding the street trees and the removal. This was a project that was planned, from my understanding, for quite some time. We're removing a lot of the pretty antiquated planters within downtown, and we're set to upgrade a lot of the infrastructure in downtown, particularly around 18th and 19th Street. And I know Mr. Anthony is here. If you can come up. And it was my understanding that we worked with an arborist to see how we could save those trees, and we did that work. Can you just explain for the public, because I know this has been a question?
Mr. Anthony.
Sure. For the record, Rick Anthony, Director of Recreation and Parks. You are correct. This has been a process, a project that's been in progress for quite some time. I actually went out myself with the arborist to see if there was a way that we could replant the trees or repurpose the trees, but the fact of the matter, because they're in the raised planters, majority of their root balls would not be able to be salvaged or be able to kept intact. So it is unfortunate at this time that we got to this, but those were the facts of the matter.
And also, we plan to replace
Yes.
trees. So we plan to replant mature trees of the area.
Exactly. Every tree that was taken out will be replaced, and we will choose the largest species, the most drought-tolerant species, and obviously, the species that will provide the most shade.
Right. And this whole notion that somehow this is a strategy to remove homeless, I take exception to. We actually, I particularly advocate on behalf of making sure that we have additional resources for our unhoused folks, particularly in the heat. And for anyone who attended the housing and homelessness meeting yesterday, that was a question that I raised in terms of what we do when we're responding to unhoused. But also, wanted to clarify and underscore, Mr. Straklous, in our design of 18th and 19th Street of our improvement project along that corridor, it actually includes elements, including street furniture. Is that correct?
It does.
Okay. So we actually will be enhancing the area for all of our citizens to find refuge under shade in downtown. Correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you so much. Thank you very much, Mr. Anthony and Mr. Straklous.
We'll now move to the public statements listed under the agenda. If you're here to speak on items listed under Consent Calendar Item 7, your time to speak is now. Again, each speaker is given a two-minute time limit, and each agenda item is limited to 20 minutes total. The consent calendar as a whole constitutes one agenda item. If you're here to speak on Hearing Item 9A or Deferred Business Item 11A, now is not the time to speak. You'll be given an opportunity to speak when those items are called later in the meeting. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding items listed on Consent Calendar Item 7?
Mayor Go, we've received one speaker card regarding Consent Calendar Item 7E7.
And would you go ahead and call that speaker?
Kev.
Welcome. If you just wait until everybody exits. Thank you. Welcome. Go ahead.
I'm here in solidarity with the many folks who have mobilized to see $2 million be put into the eviction prevention program, a program that will act as a buffer between renting and homelessness, a program that's guided by aiding people instead of making a profit, a program that helps people by assisting them instead of policing them, which is why it not only needs to be properly funded but properly effective. If the program is not in good faith, or if they don't have the resources necessary to assist everyone in the community, then it won't be effective at helping the marginalized people who need it the most. GBLA will not be effective. The right to counsel programs deserves a chance to be effective, and it deserves the $2 million of funding it ought to have. I urge these things because it's the livelihoods and survival of community members, of human beings, that are on the line.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Kev, for those comments. I do agree with you. There are those vulnerable individuals who do deserve the services provided through this eviction protection. I think earlier this afternoon, we were able to have a conversation. And just to clarify, Mr. Clegg, we are bringing this item back to housing and homelessness in three months' time to review the status and to monitor the progress of GBLA's work through this contract.
That's correct. Both this contract as well as considerations for other neighborhood stabilization projects that we could pursue.
Okay. And I do know that there's this question about $2 million. I'm not quite sure how that was calculated and where that came from. Did that come from staff or from GBLA?
It did not.
Okay. And so we will have another opportunity to review the contract and that funding amount, and how GBLA is performing, both in three months and then also in subsequent meetings, correct?
Correct.
So what I'd like to do is make a referral, that we bring this item back, in particular, at mid-year. So we talk about mid-year budget and make it even a contingency item for us to address should we need additional resources given the demand. Okay? And with that, I'll move the consent calendar.
You have a motion. Please cast your votes.
Mayor, prior to the vote, if I can just announce, we provided a staff memorandum transmitting correspondence on a non-agenda item.
Thank you. Go ahead and cast your votes.
Motion is approved, with Councilmember Weir absent.
Thank you. And for the record, the Vice Mayor did check ahead of time, and none of the council members wished to pull any items for separate consideration. But thank you. Our next item is public hearings. Each side will be allowed 15 minutes. It's 15 minutes for all speakers per side, so it's important that you identify yourself, make your statement succinctly so others may speak. We'll hear statements from those opposed to staff's recommendation first, then we'll hear from those who would like to speak in favor of staff's recommendation. If there's testimony on both sides, each side will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal. There's a clock on the TV screens behind me, which indicates 15 minutes. Please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and after 14 minutes, a yellow light will come on. At the end of 15 minutes, a red light will flash indicating your time is up. Quickly enter statement. You may ask questions during your statement, but they won't be addressed until the public hearing is closed. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, give them to the clerk, and she'll provide copies to the council. Please be courteous to others who wish to speak. Madam Clerk, please read the public hearing item.
Public hearing to consider action plan amendment to HUD Action Plan fiscal years 2022 and 2023 and 2023-24.
Thank you. And Mr. Clegg?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Our Economic and Community Development Director, Ms. Byers, has a brief overview for this item.
Ms. Byers.
Thank you, Christian and City Council. So this item before you tonight has come... Hold on. I messed with my computer. So the item before you tonight is a public hearing request based on our home funds. We're requesting a reallocation of those funding resources specifically from two fiscal calendar years. Let me see. I love technology, and yet I struggle with it daily. So basically, the items that we're requesting are from 2223 to reallocate some of the funding for the Let's Ring Senior Housing Project. It is 150 units located in Ward 1. That project is up for some tax credits, and in order to be more competitive, there's some funding reallocation that we are proposing. There's some funding from 2223 budget year, as well as from 2324. We have a second request for an amendment, a substantial amendment, for the tenant-based rental assistance for CAP-K to provide $1 million in tenant-based rental assistance. We did notice this agenda item, and are requesting City Council approve these budget items.
Thank you. Anything further, Mr. Clegg? And at this time, Hearing Item 9A is open. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to staff's recommendation? Please come to the mic, identify yourself, and proceed. Seeing none, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support of staff's recommendation? Please step to the microphone, identify yourself, and proceed. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and return it to council for comment and action. Madam Clerk, can you activate the request button, please? All right. Just signal to me if you would like to speak. Anybody comments? No comments? Vice Mayor?
I move to approve the action plan amendment.
You have a motion? Please cast your votes. Oh, right now? Are you frozen? Just give her a minute to see whether...
Motion is approved, with Councilmember Weir absent.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Deferred Business Item 11A fiscal year 2024-25 city budget. Item one, a resolution approving and adopting operating capital improvement budgets for the city of Bakersfield for the fiscal year 2024-25. And number two, a resolution establishing the city of Bakersfield appropriations limit for fiscal year 2024-25. A staff memorandum has been provided transmitting correspondence regarding this item, and another staff memorandum was provided updating the salary schedule.
Thank you. Before we begin, please note that if you're here to speak on Deferred Business Item 11A, the city clerk will call for public statements after staff's presentation. Each speaker will be limited to two minutes, and there will be a 20-minute time limit per item. Mr. Clegg?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just to provide some context for this item, over the last several months, we have had workshops, in particular, related to the Public Safety and Vital Services Tax through that Oversight Committee that makes recommendations related to that funding source. Those were held in April. They made recommendations and provided feedback that was provided to the City Council at your last meeting in the meeting packet. We also had a budget workshop for the City Council that covered presentations from all departments that went through this information. Of course, those workshops and meetings are also available to the public. That may not have been able to attend those workshops online through our online portal that has our meeting agendas and meeting minutes and recorded meetings. And then at your last meeting, we had a public hearing to solicit community input related to the budget. And what you have before you tonight is the final budget recommendation for adoption. Next year's budget, again, just to set some broad context that has been repeated in all of our workshops, that we continue to see the economy be fairly flat overall. We have seen some modest increases in sales tax and property tax, but not what we would expect in sales tax in a typical economic year over year. And so also, our cost of doing business has continued to increase due to inflation, general cost increases for supplies and services. We've also had increases notably in our utilities, as well as our liability costs, our insurance costs and risk mitigation costs are up by millions. We have also, I think it's fair to note, addressed some deferred market compensation adjustments in the last couple of years, and that continues to also affect next year's budget. But overall, with our costs going up and our revenues remaining flat, it means a tighter budget. And so we've had a very conservative approach to our budget for this coming year. We have made very few additions to employees or services. We actually reduced the Public Safety and Vital Services Tax ongoing operating expenditures by more than $3 million to make some space for programs that are of high strategic priority, like including another $1.5 million in next year's budget for additional emergency shelter beds. We've also increased our capacity to address chronically homeless through intensive case management services. And then we've made some additions on the policing side for professional employees, non-sworn employees, but returning many sworn employees to police work, as well as just continuing to professionalize the administrative and other supports to the police department. And we've also just added two call takers to help with our homeless encampment call center. Those are probably the most notable additions. We have capital projects also that address in large part our streets. We have $82 million that is going towards streets in this proposed budget. We've been in a large catch-up mode there. Modest investments in ongoing park work. I can affirm to the community that we have done more than 30 park projects in the last four budget cycles, spending millions of dollars upgrading and addressing deferred maintenance in our parks. But this coming year, a little more modest investments to make sure we can do grant match funding for the Martin Luther King Community Center renovation, as well as some other enhancements in parks throughout the city. The full details, of course, are in the agenda packet. They're also online in our proposed budget book. And if I could just reflect overall, our budget this year, we have a capital improvement project budget that is $172 million total. Our overall budget is just under $900 million across all funds, including our enterprise funds. Our general fund budget's now over $400 million. But again, reflecting those highlights of the most strategic additions, our focus was on maintaining essential services, making some strategic additions, and setting aside contingencies and reserves to ensure against any potential further economic downturn in this coming year.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers regarding Deferred Business Item 11A?
Mayor Go, we have received one speaker card for Mr. Eddie Lane.
Mr. Lane.
Mayor Go, I'm Eddie Lane. I thought I was going to be discussing the $2 million eviction prevention program. Am I at the right time, my place?
You're... You put down 11A.
I may have made a mistake. I would argue that there...
It was a subset.
That this is a, you know, budget item that allocates resources. It's appropriate.
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay, thank you. I'm Eddie Lane. I'm a longtime Bakersfield resident. I'm a longtime Bakersfield resident, here to speak on behalf of the $2 million proposal for the eviction prevention program. I'm passing around two pictures. The first is of the denuding of all living vegetation between a portion of Truxton Lake and Truxton Avenue, creating a virtual moonscape. This picture was taken on March 27 of this year. The purported purpose protect the water storage functions of the lake. However, four large water storage ponds west of Allen Road serve the very same purpose. They are not denuded of plant life. This unsightly scene is not necessary. As the Sierra Club has recommended on numerous occasions, there needs to be a written protocol regarding habitat protection along the Kern River and bodies of water, natural or man-made, such as Truxton Lake. The development of such a protocol was promised three years ago by then Water Resources Director Archie Anello, and provided to the staff and the council many times. No follow-up. Particularly troublesome is the renewal of a contract with General Tree Service last year from $860,000 to $1.7 million. The first page of the contract is provided for your review. General Tree Services was responsible for what you see in this March 27 picture. However, city staff bulldozed the other side of Truxton Lake and destroyed habitat along the Kern River the same day. Cut and destroy. The second picture was taken June 24, 2024, just a few days ago, of trees trimmed at Jastro Park. What guidance from city staff was provided to General Tree when they hideously butchered those trees in what was once our Bakersfield Tree City? Aside from looks, there is virtually no shade for on hot days. Please stop this destruction of our limited native vegetation, take the $1.7 million and put it into use for our vulnerable population. This program, this $2 million, for eviction prevention. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. Madam Clerk, do we have other speakers?
Mayor Go, we've received additional speaker cards. The following three speaker cards were received. Noah Garcia, Ashley De La Rosa, followed by Valerie Pinto.
Welcome. Please introduce yourself.
Hi, good afternoon, City Council. My name is Noah Garcia. I'm the Director of Civic Engagement with the Delores Fuerta Foundation, speaking here on behalf of Delores Fuerta and the organization. I'm here to urge and really thank the city for allocating $350,000 for the eviction prevention program. It's been a, you know, huge battle by, you know, Leadership Council for Justice and Accountability and tenants as well. And so we're here to really, you know, urge that the city allocate more of that funding for the eviction protection program. We're asking for $2 million to really fund this program and ensure that we can reduce the inflow of families into homelessness by protecting vulnerable tenants from eviction. We know that homelessness continues to increase each year, and we've seen those figures just this year alone as well. And so we know that, you know, preventing folks from losing their homes is a more humane and cost-effective way than having to help them rebuild their lives after they become homeless. So I appreciate the motion to, you know, review the program and its effectiveness, but we are asking for more funding, $2 million of funding. And we're going to continue to work with each of you all to find that funding and get more of that funding as soon as you all see how effective that program has continued to be. So that's really what we're here to do. Thank you so much for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Next speaker, please.
Ashley De La Rosa, followed by Valerie Pinto, followed by Vicky Granito.
Good evening, council members. My name is Ashley De La Rosa. I am a member of the Kern County Young Democrats. I'm here, I just want to share with you, when I was in fifth grade, I was actually houseless, and I didn't know. As a child, you never understand why you're constantly moving, why you're having issues, and why these issues are never fixed. And so, you see, now I know what I didn't understand then. Landlords abuse low-income immigrants. People of color of families are vulnerable to evictions and vulnerable to residing in one home. We are experiencing a huge houseless crisis, and the solutions you've presented thus far are really Band-Aid solutions that do not offer long-term or for a longer term. It is necessary to fund important, it is very important for you to fund the $2 million for eviction prevention programs. And the key word to this, it's prevention. If you provide the just $350,000 for rental assistance as a one-time Band-Aid solution, and we're asking for long-term, we are asking for investments. And just for you to understand, the story I bring this to you today is because the 2,500 residents that are facing homelessness today in Bakersfield are not just adults. They're young children that are also suffering the burden, that are being kicked out at a higher rate in suspensions in our Kern County schools. So if you're kicking them out of school, and they have nowhere to go, and on top of that, they have no assistance, how are we providing and serving Bakersfield? And so today, if we really listen and believe the implication of Father Hector, then you will be leaders and stand in solidarity with the community and provide for the most in need. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. De La Rosa. Next speaker, please. Okay, before you start, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I apologize. Ms. De La Rosa, thank you so much for sharing your story and your personal testimonial. I really honor that. I really do, genuinely. And I do want to communicate that, you know, eviction protection, I don't believe is a Band-Aid. I don't think that's what you were saying. But it's also coupled with lots of other prevention programs that we're trying to build out. And in fact, we do have a rental assistance program, emergency rental assistance program. And just, Mr. Clegg, if you will, I know we had just a presentation at the 3:30 meeting, but for the benefit of those individuals who are here now to speak on this particular issue, I think it's important that we communicate, you know, to our constituents and to the public who care particularly about this issue, what exactly we're investing in totality. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor, Mayor and Council. So we have several programs that are currently being resourced or pending, you know, to begin, that I can highlight, as well as just express really quickly, the actions that were recommended earlier this afternoon. So the city does fund a fair housing program that helps individuals that are facing discrimination based on a protected class as defined by the federal government that is through a contract through the GBLA. We also have Home Buyer Assistance Program. We have tenant-based rental assistance that we've done, not only through, of course, the pandemic, through large pass-through dollars from the federal government, but we also allocated, more recently, $700,000 to continue the rental assistance program. And then we allocated $1 million of HUD, Housing and Urban Development Federal Entitlement Dollars, also to continue a tenant-based rental assistance program from our home funds. We actually just approved that tonight on your council agenda. We also are looking at $1.4 million from the state HAP dollars as a set aside for youth home access. To address that, we have other funding, like emergency shelter grants and HOPWA funding in smaller amounts that help vulnerable populations be housed. And then we did approve on the consent agenda, the $350,000 to begin our eviction prevention program pilot. So those are all, oh, and excuse me, we also have a home weatherization and home repair programs that are funded through our entitlement dollars. And then also, lastly, we've been able to acquire several million dollars for home weatherization and installation of solar through the Transformative Climate Communities Grant, specifically to low-income individuals in disadvantaged neighborhoods in southeast Bakersfield. So those are programs that are currently in place. We acknowledge that there are many programs across a spectrum of prevention services and stabilization services that could be considered. And we committed this afternoon in our workshop to go and do research that takes into account our draft housing element and recommendations in that, our affordable housing strategy that the city has adopted, also the Regional Homeless Collaborative Action Plan Strategy has several recommendations. And we'll look at all of those recommendations from all three strategies, as well as benchmark city research and other best-practice research, gather data on this pilot and, you know, through this other research. And we anticipate coming back to this council, based on all of that data, to be able to come back and talk about other potential programs that could include substandard housing rehabilitation, looking at how we leverage our community land trust to build different housing types, expansions of some of the existing programs, residential facade improvement grants, and also looking closely at our land use policy adoption in coming years that helps facilitate this kind of work. And so we're looking at a pretty broad spectrum of neighborhood stabilization programs beyond just eviction prevention.
I appreciate that. And one of the letters we received, I was reading, made a comment regarding their concern for the city's reduction in revenue or in reduction in our allocation for affordable housing. And, you know, I think that's a legitimate concern. That's a concern in many of our conversations that I've expressed as well. And so I think one of the, one of the ways in which I've sort of rationalized it, for lack of a better word, is that we still have these unspent ARPA dollars that are allocated for affordable housing construction for our community land trust, and we still have some dollars in our Affordable Housing Trust Fund that are unspent. So can you kind of, for the benefit of the public and for us on the dice, kind of explain staff's rationale for that recommendation?
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor. So a couple of different perspectives. One, it is accurate that we have more than $8 million. And excuse me, we had spent $1.4 million in the acquisition of a residential hotel motel. So we now have, you know, $6.5 million, a little more than that, that's going into the community land trust that's going to be developing affordable housing units. Those are significant ARPA investments that are still pending. We also have received additional monies, thankfully, in this last fiscal year from what's called Home ARP. It's ARPA funding that is specific to affordable housing projects. And we received additional allocations, I think $4 million of overall Home ARP funding that has allowed us to fund several affordable housing projects that we otherwise wouldn't be able to. At the same time, we also are looking at the Housing and Homeless Assistance Program funding from the state. Those funds have been hard-fought every year through the state budget process, but we have HAP 5 monies and HAP 4 monies that are still not fully spent. And we are very thankful to see HAP 6 monies included in the final state budget that we'll be able to use towards different projects. And then in addition to that, there is significant federal funding that's out there right now. And so we know that we need some local dollars that we can use as grant match, and we've actually been able to, in the example of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, we've allocated $5 million each year, and we've been able to go to the state and apply for matches to those funds. And so in one year, we received a $2 million match, and another year, a $3 million match. And so we got another $5 million into our Affordable Housing Trust Fund by matching state funds. And so in a tight budget year, as we looked hard at the many competing interests, we also are recommending a $2.5 million allocation to support the expansion of the Open Door Network Shelter. And with that large project and some other notable projects, and some of these other funding sources, we did feel like the $3 million allocation in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund would allow us to still do many important projects, leverage other opportunities to, you know, get federal dollars, and we hope some state dollars, although much fewer state dollars available in this coming year, to really maximize the use of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund monies as much as we could.
Okay. I have some comments to make, and I will hold those comments until the end of the public comment period.
Colleagues, we have a number of public who still wish to speak, so we'll come back to you at that point based on what we've set up. So, Madam Clerk, are there additional public speakers? We have about 14 minutes left, and are there more speaker cards than I have received at this point?
We have eight more public speaker cards or public speakers to go.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, please call, Ms. Pinto, sorry. Thank you for waiting.
No worries. Hello, dear City Council, city staff, and Mayor Go. My name is Valerie Pinto, and I'm making a public comment on behalf of the Rapid Response Network of Kern. I ask the city to allocate $2 million in the 2024-2025 city budget for the eviction prevention program. Considering what's at stake, times are hard, and there are skyrocketing numbers of evictions across California. Now that COVID-era moratoria has expired, tenants need to know their rights and have an attorney present and guide them when facing an eviction or housing issue. Considering both of our bases, your constituents and our community members at Rapid Response Network of Kern, our majority working-class populations, we need to look to Kern's most at-risk of homelessness. Specifically, what both of our bases have in common consists of not only the working class, but primarily farm workers. Monterey, Fresno, and Kern Counties have the largest number of farm workers in the state regardless of the population. Detached, single-family houses were the most common type of housing for California farm workers, roughly 57%, and about a third, 35%, lived in crowded dwellings. None of this is new to us. What is our concern is that our base of community members and local leaders involved in our Rapid Response Network of Kern are out of work. Field workers are experiencing a shortage in agricultural work, and because of field workers, the Central Valley supplies about 25% of the nation's fruits, nuts, and other products. However, only 9% of Californian, 9% of Californian farm workers lived in housing owned or administered by their current employer. All of this goes to show that your constituents are working, living paycheck to paycheck, and on top of that, do not have a stable means of a job, which affects their housing status exponentially so when there is a lack of legal resources to assist combating unlawful convictions. We must work together to ensure that tenants know their rights and have an attorney present and guide them when facing an eviction or housing issue. When the city invests in security in our budget asks to fund eviction prevention's program, our base has one less thing to worry about. However, let's reframe the idea that this is just one issue the city cannot address because of all other countless issues. Because with 37% increase in homelessness in Kern County from last year, the biggest issue is inflow. The city must prioritize...
Ms. Pinto, your time is up. Can you bring your comments to a close, please?
Yes. Not only is it inhumane that hard-working folks are unlawfully pushed out of their well-deserved homes, but it is also inhumane that the people in position to make tangible and meaningful assistance to our communities do not invest in their communities, knowing what is at stake. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Pinto. Next speaker, please.
Vicky, followed by Rosa Lopez, followed by Sandra Placencia.
Hello, my name is Vicky Garrido. I am an ex-employee for Superior Court. I worked for them for 15 years, and I have seen firsthand the eviction process and how many families have lost their homes to unlawful rulings within the courts. Just recently, I had a friend who filed for a response within the court system, and she reached out to me to help her fill out her paperwork and kind of guide her on what to do. Unfortunately, it was really sad to see that Gina Cervantes, who is a court commissioner within the Superior Court, who used to work with GBLA, and I had contact before, do, you know, just didn't want to do her due diligence in regards on the proof of services for the people who were living in that unit. And she went ahead and ruled against the defendant and ruled with the landlord. A lot of those rulings do happen within Superior Court, and it's sad to see that our justice system is not just with evictions, especially with what Ms. Pinto said. A lot of farm workers would come to the window. They would ask us for assistance on how to fill their paperwork, and us as clerks were not allowed to, were not allowed to give them legal advice. We would send them to the landlord, Tenet Assistance Center, or send them to GBLA. But opposite, the attorneys would come and ask us how to fill out paperwork or what paperwork was missing, which to me was really, it was really awkward to tell them, let me go ask my supervisors. And then the supervisors would tend to those attorneys. That is not the correct way to help our people who live here in Kern County. The system is biased towards people who don't have attorneys. Attorneys are needed a lot for these people who don't have the legal means to pay an attorney to help them through the process. That's pretty much what I was here to say.
Thank you, Ms. Garrido. And next speaker, please. We still have a number of speakers. We still have a number of speakers who'd like to speak. And so I'm going to ask you to be succinct, please.
Good evening. My name is Rosa Lopez, and I'm a long-term resident of Ward 2. I'm a community advocate, and I'm here to ask that you listen to the community's plea and prioritize and invest in programs that will keep families housed. Our unhoused population continued to increase. The speakers before me have shared some data with you, and I'm sure you've seen them in the local articles. Because we continue to waste funds pushing them out of our sight or criminalizing them for being poor. You have tested quick fixes and added emergency shelters, cleared out encampments, and policed parks. But you have not addressed the root cause of public safety concerns and the increasing number of unhoused people, like building more affordable houses, bringing industries that pay livable wage, prioritizing workforce development, creating green space, and investing in social programs that will help our families thrive and stay in their hopes. I applaud you for thinking about this crisis and naming some of the programs that already exist. But something doesn't match, right? I mean, we keep on seeing more people in the streets. We keep on seeing more people and unhoused folks on the streets. And so the data and the testimonies that you've heard here tonight does not represent what you've shared, that we are looking into it and we are investing in certain programs. Like others have shared, these are bandage responses. Tonight, you heard from various speakers imploring you to stop business as usual and reconsider how you prioritize budgets. You have a chance to stand with the community and allocate the $2 million for the eviction prevention program. Like the speaker said, this is a smart program, preventative measure to keep families in their homes instead of letting them get evicted, then hauling them around in emergency shelters. You can continue to do the same thing, you can continue to do the same thing and sound surprised when we see that the numbers don't match. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lopez. Next speaker, please.
Sandra Placencia, followed by Wendell Wesley Jr., followed by Andrea Montero.
Welcome, please introduce yourself.
There's more comment cards on the table.
We are, we have eight more minutes for this segment. So if you can all keep your comments as succinct as possible, please.
Yes, okay, thank you. Sandra Placencia, Leadership Council. Just wanted to reiterate that the reason why we want the eviction prevention program is because we want accountability. And we want accountability to the bad landlords, right? And the reason why I state this is because the programs that Mr. Clegg mentioned are great, right? We all want permanent rental assistance. We want a variety of programs that are listed in the housing elements. But I remind the city that you're currently out of compliance on your six-cycle housing element. HCD has not deemed it compliant. So by that, I state that the city must invest $2 million into the eviction prevention program to help reach accountability by HCD. What I mean by this is that the eviction Right to Counsel program is, it will further AFFH, which is Affirmative Furthering for Housing. And that will give you points so you can better reach compliance and accountability by the state when it comes to your housing element. Last thing I also wanted to mention is, through affirmative furthering for housing, the city has the ability and the duty to provide meaningful and beneficial actions that will help community. And when we were working with the ERAP back in 2020, a lot of landlords did not want to take those rental assistance checks. So who are tenants going to call if there are no attorneys to call to force landlords to take those checks? We need accountability, and we need it now. And we cannot wait until the mid-year to see this happen. And the data that is going to be collected should have been collected a long time ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Wendell Wesley Jr., y'all know me. That registry would be a big, big deal. We need to start that like yesterday because we need to identify all the landlords. And we can't allow landlords to hide behind three or four or five LLCs to get out of, to try to qualify for some type of program that will allow them to get free services, okay? So soon and very soon, there will be a nonprofit community land trust. I'm going to urge the City Council to work with that nonprofit community land trust. Because what the city is proposing is going to be based on a gross income, okay? And, you know, based on the income level of the low-income and below-income, it's still going to be too high. You're looking at a 40-year mortgage. You're looking at a first and a second, okay? We need to start building these real, true affordable housing, make a lot of them rentals, and make some of them actual housing, and sell just enough to keep the program running. Because for the simple fact that we are so far behind right now, and because we let the Real Estate Board run amok and keep pushing the level up in what we're costing, the median price of housing will continue to go up. And by allowing people to keep buying houses and flipping them, it's madness, okay? It's going to continue to go up, and it's going to continue to be out of reach until we have a true nonprofit community land trust that will actually be able to afford and keep the price down for people that need it. And that, in turn, will improve situations that we have on our street. Not just homelessness, but crime as well. It's all, it's all connected. So really, we know what we're talking about because we've been there before. And I've come from a city that's been through the same thing that we're going through right now. And I know what mistakes they did that made it worse. And I see where they are now. So please, let's reach out to us, and let's get this done. Because we are way behind. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wesley. Next speaker, please.
Andrea Montero, followed by Cecilia Castro.
Welcome, please introduce yourself.
Hello, my name is Andrea Montero. Dear City Council, City staff, and Mayor Go. My name is Andrea Montero, and I am asking the city to allocate a large investment in the 2024-2025 city budget regarding the eviction prevention program. Tenants should be given the opportunity to know their rights and have the attorney, have an attorney represent and guide them when facing an eviction or housing issues. My family and I are actually going through the process of being displaced from our home where we grew up because our landlord is selling our house. Now, I have two options. And I appreciate Andre Gonzalez and the city manager for giving us all of these awesome opportunities. However, I cannot afford a house under the loans that you guys give for first-time housing buyers. I also don't think that the housing right now is affordable for someone who literally has a good job. Like, I don't know what your definition of affordable is because my paycheck will not be able to sustain that. I am the eldest daughter of my family. I am the most eligible to have documents, to buy a house, to do all of these things. And it's really difficult for me. My father passed away three years ago, and he was the one that was representing my family. Now, I'm the legal guardian of my family, and I'm literally representing my mother and my two younger brothers. It's really difficult. So the city is obligated to actively promote fair housing, proactively combat discrimination, and address patterns of segregation by prioritizing the housing needs of lower-income households and households with special needs. It is time for the city of Bakersfield to invest and prevent, prevent lies, or, sorry, in preventative measures that will protect tenants and keep families housed. I really appreciate you listening to me, and this is all real. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Montero. Next speaker, please.
Cecilia Castro.
Hello, my name is Cecilia Castro. And today, I'm here not only on behalf of the Dolores Huerta Foundation as the executive director, but also on my personal capacity as this issue is very close to my heart. I am urging the City Council to do right by its constituents and to make a bigger investment in the eviction protection program, which will protect tenants and ultimately benefit the larger Bakersfield community. We all know that there's a housing crisis in Bakersfield. I live in downtown Bakersfield, and I see it every single day. We need sustainable solutions. And one-time rental assistance is just not enough. Like I mentioned, this issue hits close to home for me. My mother, a longtime resident and renter, recently moved into a new home. Within just a few months, she encountered numerous issues, gas leaks, electricity problems, lack of hot water, and most importantly, a hostile and incompetent property management. We discovered that this property management is basically a shell company, a company that owns many properties throughout LA and Bakersfield. And thankfully, my undocumented mother had access to resources and my help and my emotional help to support her. And many others do not. It is clear that companies like this are preying on our communities, on your constituents. Out of fear of eviction, my mother had to endure numerous violations, and we are now having to seek legal counsel. But my mother's story is not unique. It is the story of many. And we really need a solution that addresses the root cause of this problem, an eviction prevention program. I appreciate, you know, the city manager explaining many of the programs that exist, but they are not eviction protection programs, right? So this is your choice. Will you stand with corporations and developers? Or will you stand with your community? I hope that you will find it in your heart to support the eviction protection program and really stand with your community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Castro. Madam Clerk, there's one more speaker that we're going to have time for. And I'm just going to ask you to set the clock for two minutes. Ms. Santa Maria, please. Ms. Santa Maria. Madam Clerk, may I have the speaker card? Please introduce yourself.
Good evening, Council and Mayor Go. My name is Dominic Miller. I am a longtime resident of Bakersfield, born and raised from East Bakersfield to the southwest Bakersfield. And I am the senior class president of 2720 Prentice High School, ASB Honors. I am here to speak on behalf of the homeless prevention program as I have been homeless for the last couple of years due to my mother's house being taken and $10,000 of my inheritance. My experiences as homeless with landlords are unnecessary and violations of federal housing law. Recently, I know that you guys have dealt with Climer and Company, who were charged by the state attorney general for $93,000 for overcharging residents. My experience with them has been horrible. They are, they have tried violating federal laws by not accommodating the Social Security program, accommodation laws in regards to federal housing. They have allowed drug addictions. They have allowed rapes to happen, including myself as a victim raped as of February at Climer and Company. And I tried to explain to them what happened. They said, we're not responsible for your safety and quality of your living. But why do we pay rent to these landlords who refuse to help our residents and help our veterans who are homeless and help the people who are most vulnerable to these situations? And I do want to remind the council that I am developmentally disabled, so I've been through a lot. And I highly recommend that the council take this plea seriously for $2 million. I may be raspy with my voice here currently because I do have social anxiety. And it took me a lot to get up and speak at the council tonight on behalf of the homeless population. I am a homeless advocate and activist. And I believe in the fact that I have belief in the council and our city staff in order to help our homeless populations to not be homeless because of the homeless crisis that's going on in the current state, the country, and county.
Thank you, Mr. Miller, and sorry for the challenges that you faced. Thank you for having the courage to get up and speak.
Thank you, Council. You have a great night.
Thank you. And now we're going to go to council for comment and action. Vice Mayor, if you'd like to finish. Councilmember Cor.
I had a request earlier, but after hearing just your life experiences, and thank you for having the courage to come today and speak and share your personal experience, truly, it just goes to show how important programs like this are. I know it probably took a lot to come and share your story with us today. And I just want to convey my immense gratitude to you and to all the advocates, sorry, for your mother's experience. These are like real experiences of our residents here in the city of Bakersfield. And I just wanted to share my appreciation for you coming here and sharing your own personal stories. And I just hope that we can do justice to, and working towards what our residents really deserve. Sorry, I forgot what I was going to say.
Thank you. And, councilmembers, any requests? Vice Mayor.
Just a couple of comments. I think Councilmember Cor captured a lot of my testimony as well. Just want to thank everybody for your heartfelt statements and just honest testimonials. I'm thinking as I'm working here. So I wanted to ask staff for a couple of things as we look towards the future. Councilmember Arias made a referral at the last council meeting regarding the use of ARPA dollars for homeless prevention funds. I think that's a worthwhile, and I think it's a worthy use of those dollars. I'm hoping that we can get to that particular issue sooner than later so that we can identify additional dollars either for EPP or for other really effective homeless prevention funds that we can help those who are in crisis now. Can you give us the timeline as to when staff thinks that we can bring this to the council?
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor and Mayor and Council. I would also just submit that the conversation at our workshop this afternoon was the first step in being quickly responsive to that request to outline the homework that we feel like we need to go and do to look at the different prevention programs. That's one. Two, we have to share with the federal government an annual report on the use of ARPA funds in July next month. And so in the second meeting of July for the City Council, we'll have that report back to council. And I think it'll do one important task, which will be to highlight where we have spent the ARPA funds down, where we anticipate to continue to spend the ARPA funds down, and where really are there still funds that remain unspent? Largely, all ARPA funds had been at least allocated into certain buckets. But we will come back and identify for council where we have fully expended and where we don't expect to fully expend. And then that can be an opportunity for council to weigh in on how to use some of those final ARPA dollars. And so that's just a month away essentially from now. Probably worth, and I think the council's aware of this, but for the benefit of the public, we have to encumber any ARPA funding before December of this calendar year. And so we'll have to move on any program. And I think it's, it's important to consider the different ideas that we put up today even in the workshop, but also be reflective of those items that we can move quickly on versus items that might take a little bit longer that might be more appropriate from one of those other funding sources like home funds or the general fund or other HAP funds, for example. So July, and then there could be still opportunities to revisit and allocate ARPA funds in the fall, before December 2024. But we'll come back in July and have an accounting of where those funds are at.
Okay, and the other item that I was going to mention earlier was to the point that some of our community members raised in some letters that they had sent City Hall regarding their concern for a reduction in the allocation for affordable housing, that $2 million reduction. I want to make a referral that we direct staff to look at restoring those dollars in the next fiscal year, fiscal year '25, '26, and that we not continue that reduction, but that we restore it back to the $5 million as we had in the initial PSVS budget. With that, I'll move adoption, I'll move for the approval of the resolutions for fiscal year '24, '25 city budget with the caveat that we will bring back the discussion related to the ARPA dollars for eviction protection, prevention programs, or other homeless prevention work.
Thank you. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the Vice Mayor's questions, many of the same questions that I had. If, well, let me, let me back up. Ward 1 is home to some of the highest densities of housing throughout the entire city of Bakersfield. It's also disproportionately a district where we see far more renters and apartment complexes of so many different sorts as opposed to single-family residences. And even those single-family residences, many of them are rented out as well. And so I just, I just wanted to- And so I just, I just wanted to lay that on the table to say that, you know, this disproportionately impacts the constituents that I represent and the, and my very neighbors. And it's frustrating to know that as hard as we are working, as, you know, so many of our partners continue to do the good work, whether that be Flood Ministries on street outreach, Clinica Sierra Vista working on the medical side to engage some folks out in the streets, as many affordable housing units that we're building, the fact of the matter is, in a year's time from now with this current budget as proposed, I don't have reason to believe that we are going to slow down the inflow of homelessness, right? For every six folks that we place into permanent supportive housing, 10 additional individuals fall into homelessness. We are in a game that we cannot win, and it will not be until we can actually change the way that we are playing the game that we can actually expect some sort of different I don't think it's clear how tonight we do that. I think that there's no one solution that's going to fix this, this problem. There's not one single reason why someone falls or a family falls into homelessness. And in fact, you know, I love the eviction protection program. I think we have to continue to fund that program, but I also don't think that that program itself is going to prevent every single individual family from falling into homelessness. And so I appreciate the Vice Mayor's sentiments. I think we have to bring this back as soon as possible, hopefully within a month's time, leveraging the $2.1 million, but also potentially other sources of funding as well. I know we talked about many streams coming from the state and federal government that we could potentially leverage, some that we leveraged here tonight, and the sooner that we can continue to move on, on that work, I think the better question for the city manager on encumbering those funds by the end of this fiscal year. I know that we've moved a bit of ARPA funding into certain buckets, like the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, for instance, and then also the Community Land Trust. Those, that shifting of money, does that, is that considered in encumbrance of those funds by the federal government?
Thank you, Councilmember. The Affordable Housing Trust Fund monies that were moved from ARPA, yes, in part because we did that, you know, fairly early in ARPA, and we've actually awarded projects also against that funding, and so we're in very good shape there. For the Community Land Trust, we are confident that if we can identify the funding buckets for which that will be spent, we don't have to have every project, but if we can say, you know, $2.5 million is going to go towards infill and, you know, a million dollars or a million and a half is going to go towards acquisition of a, you know, this type of property, that we, that will count as having encumbered it prior to December, yes.
And so would the same thing apply if we were to develop a new program, for instance, hotel motel inspections? Would that potentially also count as encumbering of those funds?
Potentially. Let me also confirm, and we'll probably have to get some technical assistance to make sure that that is the case, I think. But, but in the spirit of your question, I think also if we've done an RFP process and identified, you know, an entity that would be managing that or, you know, owning that contract, absolutely that would count as an encumbrance, and so we don't have to have everything, you know, fully expended. It's just the projects and programs in the works, but we'll also, we can confirm whether or not an identified program with specific dollars for how it's going to be spent would also qualify.
Okay, great. Thank you. I appreciate that. And I'll just finish my comments by saying that, you know, I think we recognize the urgency that we need to move on this issue. I think it's clear that we're going to have to get pretty creative in figuring out how we are able to allocate funding towards, you know, continuance of EPP, you know, continued rental and utility assistance. There are, I think, the presentation that was made earlier, there were at least six, six other buckets of funding that come through the city of Bakersfield that could potentially be leveraged. And I say that because there are so many good things that are in today's budget as proposed that staff has worked really hard on and really diligently on, and the comments that were made tonight are not missed on me. We got to continue to move quickly. It's our hope that we can bring, staff can bring something back, and it's my hope that the advocates can continue to come back and have these conversations and continue to shed light on some of the challenges that residents are having on a daily basis until we can come to some sort of resolution and make sure that we can keep families housed. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Freeman.
Am I correct that we are going to be voting on approving the budget for next year?
That's correct.
Okay, I just want to be sure, because I have a couple of questions of what's in the budget.
Yep.
Okay. Mr. Flake, can you tell me how much is in the budget for the B-3K project and the KEDC? How much money each one have we allocated in our budget?
Thanks, Councilmember Freeman. I'm going a little bit off of memory here, but I'm fairly certain that it's accurate. We created a bucket that funds the Chamber, B-3K, and KEDC that's about $300,000. The majority of that is for B-3K. We're looking at, I believe, $250,000 for B-3K and about a fairly even split between the other two from the remaining $50,000.
You wrote us a memo a while ago explaining what B-3K had accomplished this year, which said really hadn't accomplished much. They were looking for a director. In between the lines, it looked to me like it was sort of floundering around without a director. They couldn't really, had any director, really couldn't get it pulled together. I assume we spent $250,000 this year, or did we not for them this year?
We spent $150,000 this last year.
And I made a comment that in the, all of the information you gave us on B-3K and other stuff, that, that it appeared that they were making, it's seeking more high-tech jobs concentrate, which moved them naturally towards the Mojave and where all the high-tech weapons and airplanes and everything are. And that was kind of the focus, because that is high-tech for Kern County. That's all, the only high-tech we really have that is growth. Only, but my observation, Bakersfield doesn't benefit tremendously. Lancaster does, maybe a little tachyphe, but our city doesn't get, you know, they're not setting up headquarters here when they come up with, you know, a new way to park planes, like one of the innovations they come up with. So I was, and, and in all of their communications, they completely left out our biggest and only growth industry, which is logistics and warehousing. And I was saying I wanted to see some, you know, that folded into their emphasis for the future. If we're going to give KEDC $50,000, which is what their emphasis is, and they've actually done a reasonably good job in that, and if that's going to be split to 50 to 25,000, we'll give 250, and I have nothing against B-3K. We could be talking 500,000. I'm not against what they're doing at all, but I would like to see, I don't know how I vote for this not knowing if, I never got an answer. Are they, are they just saying, "We're just not interested in your major industries here. We have to create new high-tech, which is a great thought, but a lot of it isn't ever going to come to Bakersfield, and the job creation we need here is with the industries we have, and we're losing oil, ag is being shrunk, and we're a logistics center." That is it for new job creation. So how do I or we get that emphasis brought to B-3K equally since we're giving them 80% or 75% of the money?
Yeah, Councilmember Freeman, a couple of thoughts related to that. One, I do sit on the leadership council for B-3K as well as the executive steering committee, and so, you know, direction from council through me to B-3K is very direct access. But what B-3K is working on, I think your assessment of what has been the biggest wins for B-3K over the last year, absolutely we're in aerospace. That's, that's accurate. But B-3K does have a focus on several other target sectors, and so advanced manufacturing right here in the metropolitan area is an emphasis for B-3K. What they're calling advanced business services is a focus for B-3K, meaning that we, these are, for example, accounts payable or IT services or HR services that could be done remotely that, you know, other large corporations, we're finding in some of the large metropolitan areas, don't want to pay the high rents and the high wages for some of those areas, and so they're looking to sort of off, not offshore out of the country, but offshore out of those cities into places like Bakersfield. That's an emphasis for B-3K. The logistics is less so as a straight emphasis, but about advanced logistics again, and those higher technical positions in logistics is a focus for B-3K, as well as energy diversification is a huge focus for B-3K. So what I would suggest to the council is that while we haven't made huge progress in those other sectors, it's absolutely the mission of B-3K. We have received numerous grants related to aerospace, but we did also, through some of our efforts of the overall B-3K coalition, receive grants related to energy diversification. There's been some grants to help with carbon management and some other energy projects. So what we really need to do is continue to push hard to make sure that B-3K makes advancements in these target sectors that are more relevant to Bakersfield. It is my assessment and belief that we will do that. We've been working hard in those spaces. We just haven't seen those wins yet. One example is the technology park that we've talked about. The CSUB did receive the $83 million allocation to create their Energy Innovation Center that would then be a complement to the tech park there in West Bakersfield, and then also looking at Advanced Manufacturing Park in East Bakersfield along the Brundage Lane corridor. So the work of B-3K continues in those important areas. We just need to get to those wins.
Okay. Well, you're our representative there, so you have to advocate for us, and I'm not saying that the people on the board are good people and aren't advocating for us. Some of them are really more in the county than they are here, but I need assurance from you, and I'd like us to sort of get a quarterly report on what are they doing for us? If we're, that's a large allocation compared to, you know, we're giving very little to anybody else. If we're giving $250,000 a year, I would really want your assurance that you'll be telling us and advocating for stuff here and some pragmatic stuff, and not to exclude our logistics and industries that we have. Everything doesn't always happen in the county. So, okay, that's one caveat. I need that assurance. Oh, the other thing, within this budget, are all of the parks, you know, I'm the guy who brings this up every time, are all the parks that we have collected the majority of the fees for budgeted to be under construction within the next fiscal year in this budget?
They are not.
And, well, we're putting a lot of money towards other things. Those are legal and moral obligations to the people living in the houses staring at a dirt field, and they paid their money. I know, I'm the guy who complains about this. What do we have to do to get at least the ones, sort of, if they paid the majority of the fees, why aren't we building their parks this year, other than if you say, well, we started engineering design? I think we talked about one a while ago. Why aren't we doing it? I mean, why are, it isn't that much money in the 600, and it's like, what, that'd be a first priority before we did any other kind of a park. We would do the ones that the people already put their money in. So what do, what do I need to do, or what do the council need to do to get these, the ones where they've already paid? Not the one that they've only collected 25%, but the ones with the majority have paid their fees, or they bought their house, which had a big massive, you know, five, 6,000 bucks in that house is for the fee for the park and for their home. What do we do to get the parks built?
So a couple of different things. First, our Parks Master Plan update has been in process, which we've asked the team to come back to council with recommendations for how to get those parks done. That's scheduled for July 24th. We're going to also come on that council meeting and provide that presentation to you. My belief, and we can, we'll verify this, you know, between now and July 24th, is that, excuse me, the, the number of parks where, you know, 70, 80% of fees have been collected, it's actually a small number of parks. We have 11 undeveloped parks that we did make a commitment to build, but for many of those, we have collected less than 50% of the total fees.
Let's say there's three.
Yeah.
Why, why can't we be reserving enough money to meet our obligation to those people? I mean, we, we put estimated amounts for things we haven't bid yet in our budgets all day long. We, we say, hey, given what we've got, what RIC says it costs per square foot, hey, here's a project, how much it's going to cost, if we got to chip in, put it in the budget. We don't have a final engineering bids on it anyway, but we budget for things in advance with estimates, and I'd sure like to see those three parks put in that we can certainly get them engineered and started before the end of the next fiscal year.
So I would agree with you that we do budget that way, absolutely. I agree with you that I think we could get the engineering and design, you know, and potentially even construction in the works in this next fiscal year. I think a couple of the big decisions that we're pending trying to get this back to council were that our, and you've talked a lot about this, so there's no surprise to you, that our ability to build a 10-acre park or a full five-acre park with the fees that were collected is going to be hindered. You know, we, the fees have been fairly flat for a lot of years. Some of these were collected, you know, before the pandemic, when, you know, inflationary costs.
But we've had this discussion three times at council. We know that.
Right.
We absolutely know that. We might have collected half. We were remiss for five or six years not bringing the subject up, whatever. I'm just saying, we should be putting in this budget a plug figure on our best estimate, because we're going to fund the difference, whether it ends up being an eight-acre park, a seven-acre park, a 10, that we put a number in there so that it's, so that there is some money there once you decide how big, how will cost a year that park, but we've, you know, we can make an educated guess. I don't know if it's an extra million on each of three parks, but it's a number, it's in there, and we, you know, that way it's been budgeted, so when the time comes, you can actually fulfill our obligation to these people and start construction, even if it happens in the last quarter of next year. But at least sometimes the next fiscal year, we at least break ground on if, if it's three parks that we have, you know, basically the subdivision's finished. There is nothing we can do to get that in the budget?
I think at this point, we have probably two options, and I'll acknowledge, I think, I think a fair suggestion that you're making, Councilmember. We didn't do it in the proposed budget, and so we would have to identify something else to, to back out of the budget to do that right this minute. The next option would be that we identify really how much we think that that would cost, you know, to do those parks when we come back on July 24th, and then identify at some point during the year another appropriation. I mean, another time could be mid-year if we have year-end fund balance as we close the books and identify, hey, we've got $2 or $3 million of fund balance that, that could go towards those parks, then we could plug that in after we close the books.
Okay.
But to do it right now, we'd have to back something out.
Okay, then if, if you will agree that the first monies from the, the extra fund balance, you know, the stuff we really didn't spend that we budgeted, that always cushions our cash reserve at the beginning of the year, that can be, that can be 10 million, it can be substantial, that at least we take the first monies it can be substantial, that at least we take the first monies from that, which will be like found money, and we apply it towards, whether it's two or three, you tell me, the parks that really should, should have already been started, and we put those in the budget at the, whatever, in the revision with these monies. When we revise the budget to reflect those extras, at least we take the first, whether it is, 3 million bucks, and we pass this budget like it is, but that we agree that when those found monies turn up, we will reserve those to start these parks, that at least two or three of them ought to get engineered and designed and get them done by the end of the year.
Mr. Clay?
If you just would wait one minute so our guests can leave.
I know.
Peers that are, a number of them are trying to leave right now.
People are tired of hearing park discussion. But I'm, I'm going to keep bringing it up.
For anybody else who feels like they want to leave, this would be the appropriate time so that we can continue?
Coming back.
Well, nobody's here from those neighborhoods tonight, are they? I'm, I'm done with my comments after this. Just, I just need a satisfactory answer here.
You know what? All we've got to do is let Councilmember Bruce speak for a while, and we'll clear the chamber.
So, Councilmember, I am comfortable with that recommendation. I think respectfully, that's probably a council decision. I'm comfortable to say I would recommend that back to the council. But if, if there's, I guess, you know, as council, as the appropriating body, you decide, you know, how to, you know, appropriate and spend those funds, if there's, I would sort of call a little bit the question if there's, you know, comments from colleagues who might want to, you know, comment on that at this time, that would help staff know how to, you know, bring that recommendation back for a future appropriation. But I am, I'm comfortable with that recommendation, but I would just suggest, again, it's a, it's a council decision.
Is that simply a separate motion and don't make it part of the budget approval?
One suggestion I could make is that we received a referral already earlier tonight to consider another item, you know. At next year's budget, we also received another referral, you know, earlier tonight to look at another item at mid-year. And so, it could be a separate motion, or it could be a referral to staff to bring back that recommendation after we identify our, you know, fund balance.
Okay, I'll just, to keep the budget clean, I'll make a referral. I'll make that a referral to bring this back when, you know, once we determine the, the cushion that we had going into the fiscal year for reconsideration. Okay. That's my motion. Oh, that's my direction. That's my referral.
Thank you, Councilmember Freeman.
To staff. I don't think it needs to be to a committee.
I agree. We can bring it straight back to council.
All right.
Thank you. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll keep my comment short. Just, just one comment about the process for the budget this year, and really, you know, also applicable to the mid-year budget as well. I think we could do a little bit better, or at least I would like to ask that we do a better job at educating this council on what sorts of capital projects, you know, are in the hopper. You know, there's just so many across the board and across departments, and it's, it makes it really challenging to figure out, you know, what, what's coming down the pipeline, you know, what's, you know, coming up next year? Is there an opportunity to, you know, make an acquisition for some parks that need to go in as opposed to, you know, the Regional Park at MLK? I just think across the board, it would be really helpful for us to, you know, take a deep dive at, you know, what's, what's on the docket.
If I may, Councilmember Freeman, very happy to do that. Just clarifying, when you say in the hopper, that's, I think I'm hearing you say not just what's in the proposed CIP, but those that are, that just didn't maybe quite make the cut to be in the CIP, the next ones down the list in the CIP?
Exactly, exactly. And then also to, because there are, you know, projects that, you know, we will fund utilizing local dollars, PSVS, general fund, et cetera. But then also those others that maybe, hey, we're going to get a project into design so that we can go after this major grant opportunity. You know, all of that would be super helpful as part of the budget conversation. Thank you.
Councilmember Gray.
Well, this is kind of a, you all have kind of given me a good segue because we're trying, we're talking about budget and where we can find money to do some of these things. And I wasn't going to bring this up after our very tear-jerking testimonies tonight on the eviction. I thought, no, this is not the time to talk about this right now. But now that we've gone into this other conversation, I had brought up two weeks ago about the 40, $49 million being spent on complete streets. And the next day, I believe it was, there was a big article in the, in the Californian on that that was published June 12th. I just want to tell you, first of all, I appreciate the breakdown because when that $49 million was just sitting there, we're going to spend it on complete streets, we had no breakdown. That's where I think we could get better before this budget, you know, next year, so that people really understand when you just throw $49 million out there and you don't really know what it is, it helped to get that, that breakdown. And I do want to say that all the capital improvement programs are listed in the budget that you guys gave us. So I appreciated that. So in looking at that, the majority of the money was money that needed to be spent. I appreciated you told us where that money was coming from and so forth. And 77% of the complete street budget was on sidewalks, which I'm very pleased, pavement resurfacing, stormwater management, and street lighting. That made up 77% of it. And again, I just want to reiterate, those kind of details need to come to us way before we're going to be voting on a budget. So that's what I didn't feel good about last week. In fact, I was going to vote against the budget if I didn't get the information that I needed. So thank you for sending that. However, though, it was reported in that same article on June 12th that city officials were reviewing the eventual rollout of the active transportation plan. This is where, when we're talking about money needing to be found, just hear me out on this, guys, that has made me a bit nervous. In that article, it said that all future projects, programs, and policies aimed to make it safer and quicker to travel without a car. When I read that, I thought, wow, what an oxymoron. We're going to travel quicker without a car. I don't think pushing a stroller, being in a wheelchair, or riding a bike is going to be traveling quicker without a car. So that, that was kind of odd to me. And so, and then another quote, it said, "The aim of the plan is to offer easier access to alternative mode of transportation, bike, foot, wheelchair, scooter, stroller, skateboard, to name a few." I'm quoting, again, in the newspaper. This is all coming from staff and so forth. I'm reading that, and I'm thinking, aren't sidewalks meant for pedestrians, wheelchairs, strollers, scooters, and skateboards? Roads are meant for cars, not scooters, skateboards, and pedestrians. So that really puzzled me. And when I brought this up two weeks ago, I had a barrage of comments coming after me because I said that people, in fact, I talked to two today, in my constituents, in my business, that said, what is going on, Patty, with these narrowing of roads and so forth? I'm kind of getting ahead of myself, but anyway, two more people today. So on June 16th, it was reported and quoted to say, but we are trying to change habits so we can reduce the amount of people who are literally dying on our roadways. Change habits. I'm thinking, okay, change habits, move around more quickly without a car, as stated in the June 12th article. Puzzled again by that statement, when we're a sprawled city, we need cars. And, and very respectfully, because I respect the fact, and Councilmember Smith is in such great shape because of it physically, but he's the only one that I know of in this whole room that rides a bike to work every day. The rest of us drive cars. Roads are meant for cars. So change habits? Who's going to change their habit? Is anybody else in this room tonight willing to change your habit and start riding your bike to work? I kind of doubt it. I'm not going to be able to do that when I'm 80 years old, you know? It's hard, it'd be hard for me now. I guess maybe if I had an electric bike. So then June the 23rd, and I'm having to take you through this because I need, with the barrage of comments that I got afterwards, acting as though I'm this horrible person because I'm not worried about people dying on our roadways or pedestrians are riding a bike, yes, I am. But let's get this all into perspective. So in June, on June 23rd, the headline was, "Nearly Every Pedestrian Killed Last Year Was Found At Fault." Why? Well, according to BPD, and I assume they'd be the authority on these matters, of 28 pedestrians killed last year, 20 were found to be at fault. That mirrors the California Highway Patrol numbers, which oversee state routes and highways, concluding pedestrians have caused nearly half of recorded crashes this year, end quote. I didn't pull that out. It was in the same article. Traffic Commander Mitch Galland, a 26-year veteran on the force, stated that people crossing mid-block can be the deciding factor in laying blame. It's the majority of, excuse me, of the time by far. Mr. Galland also stated he believes the city streets are a volatile mix of harried drivers, darting pedestrians, and diverging cyclists that together routinely flout the rules of the road. When asked about complete streets program, he was skeptical. One could have all, one could have all the crosswalks, barriers, and partitions in the world, there's no simple solution for stopping pedestrians or cyclists from shirking the rules and getting hit. If we build the bike lanes and they don't use them, then what? Councilmember Smith, I know you're following the rules, and I know you're using the bike lanes properly. Most people are not. So he goes on to explain that law enforcement has the inability now not to be able to enforce or punish jaywalkers because of Governor Newsom's known Assembly Bill as Freedom to Walk Act. I thought, well, that's a really interesting title for jaywalkers. Now they have the Freedom to Walk Act wherever they want to go. So you'll never change people's habits to reduce the amount of people who are literally dying on our roadways, no matter how much traffic calming you do when people are not following the roads. And then a consultant, and this is why I'm bringing this up now, because this ties into the conversation we've been having. A consultant with Kim Lee Horn, Mr. Darryl Phillips, said in the same article, June 23rd, so I'm not going to lie, this is going to be an expensive plan to implement active transportation, plan. He says it's going to be an expensive plan to implement. There are a lot of big investments, I believe, that are needed that we've talked about on this dais tonight. We have got a lot of stuff facing us in this city, and we're talking about this expensive plan to, to put this together. I don't get it. I don't get it. I just don't get it. So all the information from these experts is exactly why I'm against spending millions of taxpayer dollars on narrowing the streets, jamming up traffic when the roads were meant for cars. It is these types of policies that are a waste of hard-earned taxpayer dollars that are driving our constituents right out of our city. Good tax-paying people, we meet them every week in our business, that are leaving the country. They want to remodel their bathroom or kitchen so they can sell their house and leave, I'm not the country, and leave the state into other states like Texas, Tennessee, Florida, Idaho. So I do not believe as a city we can afford to throw money away when there are so many other ways to spend our dollars, as in towards our neighborhood stabilization programs, our parks that people have already been talking about tonight. We heard testimony after testimony tonight. I mean, two out of seven of us visibly showed their heart and their tears for the people that are coming forward, and I was holding my back. So I'm saying to all of you, and, and Councilmember Freeman, he was quoted in that same article as saying, it's going to be like a cold shower dealing with budgets as all this subsidies dry up one day. So I would ask the staff to reconsider the high cost of your active transportation plan that is going to cost millions of dollars into the future for this city when we have basic needs, basic things that need to be taken care of, and we're thinking about some of these crazy ideas. And we may get in so deep into that thing that we cannot deliver on the promise. So that's my comments tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I just obviously need to respond to a few comments. Roads are meant for cars. Roads are meant for people. Roads are meant for the public. You said yourself sidewalks are okay. Well, sidewalks are a big part of it. Streetlights are okay. Well, streetlights are a big part of it. A complete street isn't when we first build 24 feet of paving and it's only built for cars. A complete street includes sidewalks. It includes drainage, which was another 20% of the 49 million. So I don't know, you like streetlights? I mean, that cuts down on crime. It, it makes streets safer for everybody. You like sidewalks? That makes things okay. Everybody likes storm drain. Flooded streets are unsafe for everybody. If it's the 2% that's going for the bike lane, I'm sorry. That's just 2%, 2% for the bike lane. That's too much. I, you know, I'm with you. Those people should die. But the, you know, people driving cars, 10,000 red light stops and stop sign citations we gave the last time I could get in a year. 10,000 people driving cars. 31 people died in cars without any pedestrians or bicycles involved. We need to build our streets differently. That's what we're talking about. We need to make our streets safer for everybody. That's what we're talking about. Thank you.
Councilmember Cor.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to echo Councilmember Smith's sentiment. Roads are for people. The city is for people. The parks are for people. And if we, just yesterday, a devastating accident happened where a pedestrian, we don't even know, we don't even have the report back from our authorities who have been doing the investigation. It didn't feel urgent enough for us to have a report back to know what exactly happened and how someone yet again lost their life just using the crosswalk. If, if we can talk about $2 million being, if we can say something, go as far as saying $2 million is a huge amount of money, when we are still reading headlines about someone who lost their life, and residents have been reaching out to so many of us, who were literally trapped at nearby gas stations because of the investigation going on, and who were looking at a pedestrian, the pedestrian, the cyclist, their body is in the road. This is on Stockdale Highway. And I know we have a lot of conversations about where these accidents are happening and pedestrians being at fault. Let's not remove the fact that the geography of that is always kind of an undertone as to how we're placing value on people and who's in the streets and why they're walking and why they're cycling in the first place. This is also a class conversation to be had. But when, when it's also the first place. This is also a class conversation to be had. But when it's also in every part of town, it's in every district, it's in every ward, I guess we're also failing to talk about the parts of this same article when residents also shared their own personal experiences of just walking. There was a list, a grocery store list of items that somebody was going to the store to just obtain, and didn't even feel safe enough to do that. There was a young woman talking about her grandfather who cycled, and we're talking about if anybody in this room is going to cycle back and forth to work. This is not, this is not representative of our whole city, or the residents, or the population. We saw people leave who had other commitments, who have to go take care of their children, feed their children, have to get up and go to work today, who can't even watch us pass the budget because of the time that it's taking. We're also talking about the people who can't make it here today. It is the elderly. It is the children who should be able to safely cycle to work. Councilmember Smith is one of the best examples, and who is so inviting and encouraging of how to practice cycling safety. For a child who should be able to cycle to school safely, who should be able to walk to school safely, how are we thinking about them in this equation? Because I have had children lose their lives to speeding vehicles in my ward. So I can speak to that and families who are still grieving to that. And I know I'm not unique in that experience. The elderly man mentioned the article. That was also in my ward. That is an elderly man who cycles to the park every single day, who cycles to his place of worship every single day, and has the same route. Was it his fault that there wasn't a bike lane on the right side of the road? No, that is an infrastructure issue. That is an infrastructure gap. And that is our fault. That is our responsibility in order for someone who is not able-bodied, who is, chooses to cycle, but also, a vehicle is not their primary mode of transportation, for whatever reason, for age. And they are over 80, and they are staying active. So why are we preventing them from having that ability to also engage in whatever form of mobility that they seek? He was hit by a car, and it wasn't even a speeding car. Somebody was turning right at a stop sign, and he was hit. And his blood was splattered in the road. That is traumatic. He now has moved back to India because of how unsafe he feels. That is mentioned in the article. So I think we also need to look at the full picture of this, of what it is forcing our residents with decisions they're making. Our local news agencies are reporting of how many unsafe accidents we have had, how many fatal accidents we have had, how it is only increasing. We get the press releases from the BPD every day, and almost every day, you can expect a fatality of a pedestrian or an accident that involves a pedestrian or cyclist. So if we cannot take the responsibility and invest funds, there are many competing priorities clearly for our city. But I don't think we can reduce or deny the fact that this is not a meaningful investment. This is something that is causing people to lose their lives. People are dying in our streets, as Councilmember Smith has said. This is like any other crime. This is like anything else. It should be taken with just as much seriousness. And I just, it's shocking that we have this conversation so often. All it takes is reading some of our local news media to know what the state of affairs are in our city.
Vice Mayor.
I know folks want to go home, but this comment by Councilmember Gray deserves a response. Yes, roads are for people. Someone just died in the crosswalk on Stockdale and Allen last night. Three people have died in the last week in Kern County. People trying to get around, people on bicycle, people walking, people using walkers, people using wheelchairs. Having a car is a luxury. Not everyone can afford to have a car. How do they get around safely? How do they get around? How do they travel to work? How do they travel to school? How do they travel back home? How do they go to the grocery store safely? They have to cross the street somewhere. And what we're proposing is that we create infrastructure that's safe for all users. There's three ways to look at this issue. We can, number one, we can blame the behavior. Number two, we can blame the lack of education enforcement, which in the article, we saw some folks do. And number three, we can address the root causes related to the design of roadways. So let's talk about behavior. We often talk only about pedestrian behavior, those who are walking and bicycling, but never, we never have any regard for those who are driving vehicles and their behaviors, when we know, and we hear from constituents, that people are driving too damn fast in our neighborhoods. That we know that people are more distracted than ever using smartphones and smart devices. We know that people are buying bigger, heavier vehicles, which are deadlier. And so the combination of factors of bigger vehicles moving faster by drivers who aren't looking at the roadway is a deadly mix, deadly combination. But those are behaviors we never often talk about. And there is a study that just came out from Smart Growth America called Dangerous by Design 2024, Bakersfield. Mr. Clark, what is Bakersfield ranked in the nation in terms of population? Number 57?
We're 47.
47, okay, thank you. Number 47. You know where we rank in terms of pedestrian fatalities? Ranked per 100,000 people? Any of you guys?
No.
Number four. Number four. 3.99 people have died per 100,000 from 2018 to 2022. We rank number four in the country. San Francisco, San Francisco, because oftentimes people like to blame this on those who aren't housed, which is unfair. When we take a look at homelessness, San Francisco ranks number one in the country in terms of homelessness. 959 people per 100,000. You know where they rank in terms of dangerous roadways and pedestrian fatalities? Number 63. There are cities who have actually fixed this problem. The city of Jersey City, New Jersey, I met the woman who's actually head of transportation just a few weeks ago. Before 2022, the 10 years prior to that, 2012 to 2022, they had over 100 people die on their streets, walking and bicycling. In 2022, they were able to bring that number to zero. How did they do it? It was by design, by rethinking how they designed their roadways. And so roads are for people, and we have to accommodate all users of our roadways so that we can meet the needs of our constituents, particularly given the fact that we are number four in the country when it comes to pedestrian fatalities. I am so tired of watching the news and seeing another pedestrian fatality and mourning the loss of an individual who has died on our roadways, when we could have slowed traffic down by design.
Councilmember Gray.
I'm finished with my comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I will say this. I do want to reiterate the fact that where these, our facts are coming from, came right out of our traffic division in Bakersfield. So I do, they are the authority, and I think the facts speak for themselves.
You have a motion? Please catch your votes.
Motion is approved with Councilmember Weir absent.
Thank you. Next item, please. I don't see any requests to speak yet. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I just, tonight, we voted to approve a bicycle and pedestrian facility that I have been working on since I got on the council 12 years ago. And I just wanted to thank staff for continuing to work on it. It was not easy, and it took a long time, and a lot of agencies and a lot of people. And now we're going to actually construct it, and cobbled up the money from a lot of different places. It's a great expansion of our existing Kern River Parkway that is east-west, and it will run five miles north from about Coffey and the existing bike path, and go all the way to city boundary at 7th Standard Road, and will serve that northern part of the community well. So thank you, staff, and look forward to riding on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Corr.
Thank you, Mayor. Very exciting news, Councilmember Smith. Congratulations. It's a long 12 years of fighting. Today, we passed our budget for the 2024-2025 fiscal year. We are the ninth-largest city in the state of California, and I think that's a long, hard, kind of, planning process. So I just wanted to thank staff for working so diligently and taking all of our ideas and working, you know, your very best to have seven competing priorities, as well as everything you hear from the community. And I know there's, clearly, as we've discussed even today, there's a lot of work yet to do. But we've created some meaningful, community-based programs. And it's always so encouraging to see when community-based organizations or individuals bring forward ideas that allow for us, as a city governance, to be able to partner and create something meaningful. So I'm going to thank everyone for working towards that. And just a little shout out, we have one of our local journalists who is leaving our great city of Bakersfield, John. John, you've done such a great job reporting on the city. And local journalism is incredibly meaningful, and it's something I cherish. It's something I've always cherished, no matter which city I've lived in. But the Bakersfield Californian holds a really special place in my heart. My mom made sure we read the Californian every single morning before school. It was our routine. We all sat on the countertop, and we passed the different slips of the Californian around. And that was our routine. That was our every morning. So you've spent meaningful time here. We hope you'll visit, and we'll hope you return. Thank you for reporting on our city and doing justice to a lot of meaningful causes, including the article on just asking a lot of important questions around pedestrian, bicycle, and road safety. I know that is something folks are going to sit with for a long time, and as the conversation kind of alludes to today, hope it brings some meaningful change, and you had a big part to do with that. So I will always cherish and appreciate local journalism, so thank you for contributing to that as well. So we'll miss you. The city of Bakersfield thanks you.
Thank you, Councilmember Corr. Councilmember Arias.
Thank you, Mayor. Also want to echo those same sentiments towards John. Thank you so much for your fair reporting. And just want to commend you. There were many rather chaotic moments in these very chambers. And John, you were there through all of it, whether you liked it or not. And we appreciate that, and just wish you well on your journey forward, and know that you'll always have a place here in Bakersfield. With that, I also want to acknowledge the fact that we will have someone else departing the city of Bakersfield. Mr. Chris Boyle was just informed that tonight may be his very last night here with us at a council meeting. And I just want to say thank you, Chris, for everything that you've done for the city of Bakersfield. We know it hasn't been easy. I'll recall the very first meeting that I had with Chris in his office. He said, "I have one request of you, Councilmember." And I go, "Well, what is that?" And the ask from Chris was that, "You always come to me and get my side of the story." And I hope that I've held true to that commitment. And I just want to say thank you for all of the tremendous work that you've done, and have started with the general plan, an outrageously high RENA number, working closely with developers in Ward 1 to make, you know, things happen when it comes to housing development, commercial development. You know, we wish you could be here as we hopefully eventually approve the Habitat Conservation Plan. You're more than welcome to join us in the audience as we make that happen. But just want to say thank you. And I know that you've left your department in good hands, and the city of Bakersfield is better because of you. So thank you.
I don't see any other requests. Happy Fourth. Have a safe Fourth, and we stand adjourned at 7:53.